Yeah.
The screen says.
No, no, don't tell us when we turn on the sound.
When she puts that on, they get the sound.
That's the secret, uh, that's the secret switch.
Yeah, that's the secret switch, yeah. Good evening. I'd like to call the July 8, 2013 Board of Selectmen meeting to order, and I'd like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. My pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, in the legal, the liberty and justice for all. So on the agenda tonight, under organizational information, we have, we're going to issue a dog quarantine order and schedule a dangerous dog hearing. We're going to follow that with public input and number updates. At 7:15, we have some appointments to make. 7:30, we're scheduled for a public hearing on the adoption of the selectmen's goals for fiscal year 2014. At 8:30, we're scheduled to hear from the town administrator, assistant town administrator for finance and budget on five items, and then at 9:00 PM, we will take up other business. With no mail, we can jump right into 1C, and this is an issue to dog quarantine order and to schedule a hearing for a dangerous dog. So what we have here is, we have a dog that has, or there was a group of dogs that attacked a young girl last Tuesday night, an eight-year-old girl, on Goldsmith Street, and this is the same family of dogs that was in here on May 6th, was it May 2nd, May 2nd or May 6th, for a hearing where they were held to, they were supposed to meet some standards, and they didn't meet those standards, obviously, because the dog was let out, and it attacked a young girl. And I have talked to the parents as their friends only, and that the young girl is doing well. It was, I don't want to give away too privacy, but she is, she's doing fine, she's, she'll be up around shortly, and hopefully on the soccer field and on the ski slopes this fall. With that, Chief, if you'd like to fill in the blanks and make any further statements.
I've got contact with the chairman and town administrator, assistant town administrator and town council, once this most recent accident took place, or most recent attack, excuse me, which resulted in my order to seize and quarantine the dogs. The statute, Chapter 140, allows me to give that order because there was a violation of a previous order given by this board. So as a result of us not having our own animal control, Westford came over and we were able to work out a, an agreement with them that they would keep the animals quarantined for the 10 days that is provided statutorily, and then indefinitely until this board holds the hearing and renders a decision in regards to the three dogs.
Right, so the quarantine hearing was actually issued by, as a result of the dog bite, which is 10 days, and then we went.
That's correct.
You, town council, myself, town administrator, discussed that the dogs should be held longer because of the, until the dangerous dog hearing, which was going to be.
Because of the violation of the press order.
Right, and so they, we have an agreement with the Westford Animal Control to hold those dogs for beyond the 10-day quarantine period that's required.
That's correct.
So that's the period that's required by, that the chief has required. So I am, one thing you, I don't know if you mentioned, I didn't think I heard it, was that, you know, during the discussion, town council was on board every step of the way.
Absolutely. We issued the owner of the dogs a seizure order, signed by me. Then she also received the same packet the board members received, which basically lays out the previous process and conditions issued by this board, and where we are going with this most recent incident.
Right, so, it's a, the previous time we, they, there was an attack, we didn't hold it, we didn't hold the dangerous dog hearing, there was an agreement to issue or, an agreement or order issued to maintain the dogs under control and in the yard. That didn't happen, we had another attack, so now we want to schedule a dangerous dog hearing. So open up to the board for any questions or motions.
Yeah, my only question was in looking at the May 2nd minutes, there, it does say here, "No final determination was made," and then under the orders, it said that the keeper of the dogs needs to ameliorate the cause of the nuisance behavior. So initially, it was brought up as a nuisance dog complaint back in April, which led to the May 2nd hearing. But at this point, you're before the board asking that we pursue the dangerousness aspect of it, because the statute, in fact, has sort of two different avenues as to how to.
Yeah, the hearing notice that we sent out for the May 2nd hearing included that one of the determinations that could be, could have been made on the May 2nd hearing was whether it was a nuisance or a dangerous dog. We didn't reach that point because we entered into the settlement agreement, but we're now in the position where we need to go forward with a dangerous dog hearing. We need to schedule about an hour's time for that to ensure due process and witnesses and all of that, so we're looking to have a special meeting next Monday night if we can get a quarant.
Yeah, well, I know that two of the five of us are expected at the extensive recreational bylaw working group meeting on the 15th. Was that finalized that week?
I don't, I didn't get a notice that it was finalized, so, I don't know, but it, we still have time to schedule for another day that week in post.
Okay, fine.
So I think, I think in my mind, this takes precedence, so.
The issue, obviously, of the dogs being returned or anything like that is not an issue.
Until the hearing, right, they're taken care of until the hearing.
That, that.
And all likelihood, the town is unfortunately footing the bill for the care and working of the dogs.
That's correct. At this point, we are, but Bonnie has begun to look into avenues that we might be able to recover that.
And, and, you know, even at the outcome of a dog hearing, it's, even if the board of selectmen were to order the dogs euthanized or whatever, any decision that you make is appealable to the court, so it's, I've seen very few hearings. You have to go through the process. It's an ancient ritual for a board to like to hold a dog hearing, but you're not the, you're not the final, final arbiter of what happens.
Well, let's, I mean, that's a very sensitive item to a lot of us who, you know, in this town, animal lovers, dog lovers, a lot of, you know, I just want to state now, because we've only put that one option on the table, but right now, there are only, once we have the dangerous dog hearing, there are only two options on the table. This will be, this bridge will be crossed next Monday, but it's going to be, there's only two, is to give them conditions similar to the ones that we gave them before, where they keep their dogs under control and ensure there are no more attacks, or it is to have the dogs euthanized. So those are the only two to order the dogs.
There's actually a third one, but it's outside the purview of the board. If the owner comes forward and presents the board with a proposal in regards to her having the dogs removed from town in an acceptable manner, and the dogs would be restrained to this board's satisfaction, that would be a third option, but the board itself cannot order that the dogs be removed.
Right, yeah, they can't, you can't order them out of town, but she can, but you could allow her to take them out of town to another.
Has she, has she been made aware of her ability to make that proposal?
Yes, that proposal is actually within the statute that she received, and I believe she has been made aware of that, and she's actually indicated that she may have a proposal to bring forward.
Okay, and is she permitted to visit with her animals while they're impounded?
Uh, that would be entirely up to Westford Animal Control.
Thank you.
I do have a couple of questions. Is it the same dog, or are we talking different dogs?
Well, that's, that is the tricky part of this situation, when this young girl had been bitten, and the two previous, and come to find out at least four others that were not previously reported to the police, but we have just been told of and investigated to make sure of the veracity of the reports. The dogs tend to surround the person, and they aren't really sure which one is biting. There are three instances in which a particular dog is mentioned, but the other occasions, we are not sure.
How does this affect the hearing process, because it's not a dog at this point? It's a dog, are we going to have to identify the dog in order to affect due process?
I do not believe so, no.
I believe, I believe in, in the hearing, it mentioned all three, I saw it here somewhere, there were three docs listed in one of the letters or the orders, something like that, so it's all, I mean, it's just a dog license, but all, in my opinion, all three should be handled as one, based on what we've heard and what we've looked at that.
Dogs aren't the only issue that has to be addressed, obviously, it's the ownership and that whole.
Well, I just, the reason I ask the question is not, you know, we can have all the opinions we want about things, but we have to follow due process.
That's why we have town council.
Eventually, we're going to get the effect that we're beginning looking for, so.
That's why we have town council.
Okay, we do need a motion to, to hold, schedule a hearing if anybody wants to make that.
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote as follows pursuant to MGL Chapter 140, Section 157, relative to the dangerous dog complaint regarding dogs owned by Rosemary Lee Jan Vitorio at 261 Goldsmith Street, which for the subject of the hearing convened on May 2nd, 2013, A, to schedule a dangerous dog hearing on Monday, July 15th, 2013, at 7:00 PM, and B, to issue a quarantine order pending the outcome of said hearing.
And move in second to schedule a dangerous dog hearing. All those in favor, signify by signing aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. We will now move to item number two, public input. Does the public have anything, which they want to bring to the board? Yes, sir, just.
Thank you. First of all, my name is Jim Gordon, and I live at 15 Woodridge Road in Littleton. I've been here for a few years, like 47 years. First, I want to thank you again for the opportunity of addressing you on the subject of affordable housing in Littleton. The operative word is affordable. Affordable complex housing, meaning clustered housing for all persons 60 years or older. Now, I'd like to spell out the affordable housing concept, and that is not construed as low-income housing. Excuse me. We are not looking for something for nothing, but we're able to go into a retirement community based on our status of our income and on a sliding scale. This isn't the first time I have addressed a selectman this issue regarding affordable housing. Our efforts in the past have been lauded by the Littleton Independent News, several contributing correspondents, as well as editorials by the Littleton Independent regarding our efforts to try to establish some affordable housing in Littleton. On my last visit in front of the selectmen, it was triggered off an endeavor attempting to build such a complex on Beaverbrook Road, which I know, which we know, it's probably floundered in financial woes, ending up under Chapter 11, and I don't know what would have happened to that, if anything, but anyhow, it was far from affordable. As I have prior mentioned, I did a lot of research in all this, on all the towns, one being Westford. They have three affordable housings for their elderly. One, 67 Tadmuck Road. Two, 365 Tadmuck Road. And number three, Cross Street in Graditville. Now, Littleton does have low-income elderly housing, such as Pine Tree, Mil, Mil, Mil Street, as well as Littleton Green. You can apply as long as you own, as long as you don't own your own home. We have applied, and on all three occasions, they said, "Well, do you own your own home?" You said, "Yes, you're not owning it." This is not affordable housing. On August 6th, 2009, the federal government said there was $4.25 billion allocated for affordable housing construction. Did Littleton see any of this money? We now have a Tasmahow for high school, which is quite commendable. We now have a police station that offers more air-conditioning comfort for the prisoners than many senior citizens of Littleton. We found land for Toyota of Littleton. We found other lands for the Conservation Trust lands, but no land or room for senior citizens of affordable housing projects. Summing up, I'll go into Homestead one time, to judge not your village by its edifices, but how it treats its elderly. And with that, I'd like to reinforce my narration. It's going to go way back to a little bit of a time here. See the newspaper clippings? This is Senior Condo Scars here. This is December 12th, 2002. That's 11 years ago. In that particular case, they said Gordon drew up a proposal, which he asked the consideration to be given towards establishing affordable senior housing in Littleton. December 12th, 2002, that's 11 years ago. Selectmen on the right track for housing, okay? Let's go to Beaverbrook Road. This is 327, 3, that is 10 years ago, and we know what happened to, says Beaverbrook, 40B gets a, gets the nod. Well, the nod didn't go very well. Then it goes on to February 27th, 2003, that's another, that's 10 years ago. The board eyes plans 11 of 43 units to be affordable. I never, I don't know where they are. If they're here, tell me, okay? Now, let's go to November 13th, 2003, this is 10 years ago. Integrate seniors for 40B complex. And it goes down here, Jim Gordon's petition drive, last year's petition, excuse me, and this is 10 years ago, and nothing happened. Then it goes on to June 5th, 2003, 10 years ago. Board works to remedy senior housing shortage. We go to January 15th, 2004, that's nine years ago, we're getting a little earlier. Lack of affordable unit for senior citizen housing, this was article written by Marge Hargreaves. Then we go over here to Marcus leaves solid track record, January 15th, 2004, that's nine years ago. And we come down here with a president, the ISH said, "President shifts focus to renting, not owning, using $4.25 billion to build affordable housing." Now, you can see my frustration in trying to bring some affordable housing into Littleton, and that's why I'm appealing to you people again, 10 years later, to match our sister towns and cities, and come up with something that we can have. Now, I don't mean converting garages into affordable, affordable housing. We're looking at a complex where all the senior citizens over 60 years old can live within a communal building, just like they have in all the cities and other towns. And the other towns have beaten us to death, I'll tell you, I've done the surveys, and I had to unfortunately turn this all over to Gino Fertiloni, because I, in the meantime, had her stopped long enough for a heart attack, or I would have pursued this a little bit further. But I'm at the point now, 11 years later, to standing in the same room, asking the same question, "Can you give us affordable housing in Littleton?" I have no more on than that. Thank you.
Well, Mr. Gordon, we appreciate you bringing those concerns to our attention, and I know there's a lot of different directions we can go with this. Keith, isn't, I think there's, is there a committee or a board or something where Mr. Gordon can express his concerns?
No, Mr. Gordon was, was the board. He was the Affordable Housing Committee, which I think might have had its last meeting in 2005.
Yeah, it interrupted me because I had a little physical injury.
That Mr. Gordon was on the board that prepared the affordable housing plan that was submitted to the state, the housing production plan.
Well, that primarily was for the, for the Beaverbrook thing, which didn't really generate. I don't want to get into that, but.
But you, but the board, maybe the short answer is that, that among the list of proposed goals that the board's considering tonight for the coming year is affordable housing, and if we want to be clear, that in looking at housing needs, that we're, that we're looking at the needs for seniors as well, like the draft goal may say that already, but I think that would be a way for us to address the issue.
I, I'd like to see, you know, I don't want to preface, because a lot of other people have a lot to say here, but when I see, and I have nothing against conservation land, okay, but when I see all the land being bought up for conservation land, and Toyota had no problem coming in here and taking over 10 or 15 acres, the, we, I'm of the opinion that the senior citizens are the lowest form of life allowed to prevail in this, in this town, which is not really right. I came here 46 years ago, half you people weren't born, and I feel that I have contributed to the town, I have contributed to it, I have a home and paid taxes for 46 years, and I feel that I have built this town, as well as people my age, and then to turn around and have to move out of town, which we're contemplating, either going to Nashua, or we're going to go to Westford, and we'd prefer staying here in Littleton. And we really just don't think it's right, okay? And I don't have much time left, I just started my 90th year, so I mean, if you're going to do something, do it damn fast, but.
No one's taking another 11 years.
But anyhow, I don't want to take any more of your time, I think I said, I made my point, if you can.
And it is on our list, senior housing is on our list for the affordable housing goal that the board is proposing to adopt tonight.
Then I, then I thank you.
And I think we, I have to look at the goal itself, but maybe call it out as a specific goal, and one thing that we are, I hope to try to do, is rather than just make these goals and let them sit on the burner for a year, is to, you know, schedule quarterly or having annual updates on these, so we can check in on these. So if we get to the point that three months from now, no one's made any movements, we can push these things along so that they don't just get stuck on the back burner, so.
Right on.
Thank you for your comments, and thank you for your service.
Thank you for coming, I appreciate it.
Yeah, no worries. Jerry?
I was just wondering if the previous speaker is aware that there are, there is an over 55 provision in the zoning laws that allow for higher density development, I think there was such a development built across the road from, a little from Lumber.
Yeah, yeah, there's a few, and I can, you know, I can see the point where, you know, I think he's made the point where they're not affordable, because, you know, some of those prices I've seen, not, you know, and then we also had the one that went over by very fine, that was, didn't have enough interest, that they didn't have enough, they couldn't find enough qualified candidates.
That was one of my points, is six.
Yeah, it's the one that the attorney's talking about.
But I think what he's, is affordable, and I think the, one of the issues they're saying is the stuff that's available right now is not, while it's defined as affordable by some state formula, it's not affordable by his.
The state 10 years ago gave an affordable would be, and I'm trying, I'm going to try to recall, but something in the vicinity of any income up to $35,000 that, that would be affordable. The point is that the complex doesn't have to meet low income. We're not, we're, we're not interested in low income, we're willing to pay whatever the complex calls for, but we need the physical plant, we need, then we need the complex. And I think it would be a good idea, incidentally, I had a raft of materialistic that I gave to Gino Fertiloni, a lot of research that I did to all the other cities and towns about 10, 10 years ago, and I don't know whether that's floating around or if it's any good or not, but maybe well to have a survey of what our sister towns are doing, and don't reinvent the light bulb.
Right.
Find out what they did.
Okay. Thank you again, yeah. Jerry?
I guess the final comment would be if the town were to build something like this, it would have to be self-supporting, they can't see.
Oh, yeah. Mr. Crystal?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to thank Mr. Gordon for his fine presentation. There's a lot of people in Littleton that are, I think about 30% of our population are elderly. I've been here for 29 years, paid taxes, senior club and up, and I'm aware that some towns, Subry is an example, has submitted bills to the state legislator to provide tax breaks for the elderly who have lived in town. You know, there needs to be an equation for this, but when people have paid taxes in Littleton for 50 years, and they have had kids in school for 30 of those 50 years, why should their taxes keep going up? You know, they have fixed incomes, limited incomes, and the taxes are going through the roof. So many towns, I think Littleton should find a way to join these towns and take an initiative to discover how we aid the elderly, at least with their tax bills. They don't have kids in school, these elderly, so don't they deserve a break? And if Subry can do this, and I'm sure other towns have also, Subry did this in the last year or two, I don't know how far it went, but I'd like to see this board consider the plight of the elderly taxpayer, the people that are over 65 on fixed incomes. Maybe that could be a, an item for this year's goals.
Well, it's, the picture you paint is kind of, kind of bleak and, and negative toward the board, because we do, we do have a few goals that consider the, consider the seniors and on, there's our, there's a few programs in town, so I think the goal is, is one, to take all of Mr. Gordon's energy, and two, see if there's other, other programs that we can institute. So is there anybody else for public input? Mr. Coughlin?
My name is Tom Coughlin, Coughlin Road. I too would like to thank Mr. Gordon for the presentation. If we followed up on this and listening to the presentation, it's going back 11 years and longer, we wouldn't have to deal with the faulty bead that the Omni Project presented us, that really, we could force the town into doing that. I think we dropped the ball in a lot of cases, and I think it's up to the Board of Selectmen and other boards to follow up on, on some of this, so, you know, we won't be in that situation again. Thank you.
I think we have the, as a goal, the checking the goal, I think we'll start with that, and then, guys can do your checks and balances.
I would like to.
Alex, you want to make some comments? We have, we have scheduled, we have a public hearing coming up, and we have.
I've said it three times in a year, I tried to be polite, I would like to make the comment.
I just said, Alex, I understand that you have a comment, and I was just reminding you that we have a public hearing coming up, and I was going to say, Alex, so if you could take that into consideration, please speak. I, I'm disappointed with your reaction and not listening to me.
I'm disappointed in yours, and I do know how else I'm going to express it. So let's move on with the business of the town.
Well, no, Alex, you've got your two cents, and you want to move it. Well, no, Alex, you got your two cents and you want to move it. I said, Alex, I understand you want to make a comment, and then I started to say something, and then you slammed your pen because you didn't hear it. Now, please take your, make your statements.
Sir, you are a good advocate for the seniors. What gets things done in this town is advocacy. I am glad that you are here to be an advocate for the seniors. I too have tried to advocate for the seniors. You have re-energized me as far as that goes. As far as it, us being quick in getting it done because of your age, I think you've got a few years left in you, and here's a good goal for you to work on.
Gotta be some quick building, I'll try. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, nothing else from the, with public? We'll go into board member updates. Alex, do you have anything other than anything to add?
I do have something. The Rotary sponsorship of our townwide triathlon, the Appleman, is on Sunday. I will be competing in an all-women's team, but they need volunteers. So, if you are interested in being helpful, can you please go to applemantriathlon.com? On the right side of the homepage, there's a race volunteer forum. They're looking for people to sign up by Wednesday, and they can help on Saturday with the pre-race and the afternoon, and then on race day, which the race starts at eight, parking, the transition area, swim, bike, run, or non-race events. So, if you have a couple hours to give to this great community-wide event, please consider doing so. Thank you.
Do we have anybody competing this year?
No, my record, well, oh, yeah, that's right, yeah, you're right. But my record is gonna stand this year because I have a knee injury and I will not be able to compete. So, the fastest time for a seated public official is up for grabs for anybody else, but I will be out there volunteering. I'm planning on volunteering on Saturday and Sunday.
That's a good challenge.
Well, you know, if you get, if you make it small enough, you make the group small enough, you're bound to have it, because I can go from seated official to seated selectman and, you know, things like that. So, I can make it small enough so that my record stands.
Just for the record, my women's team won first place last year and the year before. So, if we win again this year, I think that we bagged the seated officials best time.
When you do it all by yourself as a seated official, indeed my time, you can have the crown. So, with that, we can move on to public hearing. Littleton Board of Selectmen will conduct a public hearing on Monday, July eighth, 2013, at seven-thirty PM in Room 103 of Littleton Town Offices, 37 Shattuck Street in Littleton, Mass., 01460, on the following proposed goals identified in a preliminary goal setting exercise held on June twenty-fourth, 2013. Comments that are on may be submitted to the Selectmen Town Administrator's Office, 37 Shattuck Street, Littleton, Massachusetts, 01460, by noon on Friday, July fifth, 2013, or in person at the hearing. I want to ask the board, we have the deputy chief here for police communications officers, and we have a couple of town board appointments. Would anybody, would you like to table this hearing for five minutes or less and go to those, or would we like to continue with the public hearing? Hearing no comments. I'd like to call the deputy police chief up for his appointment.
Thank you very much. As you may recall, I was before the board on June nineteenth, because the fire chief didn't play nice and stole one of my people and brought him out of the fire department. So, you had a previously appointed Dan Conceason as a part-time communications officer, I think it was actually in May. And since then, he's gone through his state nine-one-one training and is involved in his current on-the-job training. So, we're asking to move him up from part-time to full-time.
I have no problem with it, and I feel like this is a routine matter, so I'll open up to the rest of the board if you have any comments or questions.
Their applicant did come from Littleton Fire Department.
Yes, but still he stole. I stole him first, but he stole him back.
Thanks. So, I want to ask him where his loyalties lie. I was, had the pleasure of being part of the interview the first time. I was very impressed with you the first time. I see no need to run you through the gamut unless you'd really like to go through it again.
I'm good, thank you.
Jeff?
How do you say your last name?
Conceason.
Move the Board of Selectmen vote to appoint Daniel P. Conceason of Littleton as a full-time dispatcher slash communications officer.
Move in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thanks. Nice to see you.
Congratulations. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Is there anybody here regarding the appointments for the Cultural and Historical Commission? Does anyone here have any applicants yet? Is there anybody here for the appointment to the Open Space Recreation Implementation?
Oh, Vera Cohen is.
Okay. All right. Let's take that one up there since it's waiting.
Vera's currently on, or has been on the Open Space Committee in the past, that what, we'd heard from a number of the members who have been on that they were not going to be interested in staying on. It's actually non, we don't give terms for this committee, but we seem like we're, we had two members who wanted to continue to serve, that we better grab them, okay, because we need them to work on it. Vera Cohen and Peter Church both wish to continue to serve on the committee, and we have a new application from Andrew Somarco. So, that would give us three at least for the, for the, a lot, and we need more, and there's a lot of work to be done. And it's an important committee because the, we need to have the Open Space Plan updated next year in order to continue to maintain our certification, which qualifies us for grant funding for programs like the one we're gonna apply to later tonight. I think we have some particularly well-qualified people who have opted not to reapply for positions here, and have, you had a conversation with any of them directly, Keith?
No, no.
I think the board should reach out to them and see if there's something we can do to encourage them. They're well-qualified candidates to be on this, and they bring a lot. Art Lazarus has one, has offered in his letter to provide the committee with assistance. So, I would just like to see the board reach out and see if, see if there's something that can be solved, or if some issue we can address that might re-engage them.
If you'd like, you say the board, are you volunteering? Are you saying we should use pick one, or what? Because I know, like, for instance, Kimberly Herrmann, who has stated to me in a separate conversation, I believe that she's not able to continue with her other commitments, so that leaves two.
David Outman was just down the street from me. I wouldn't mind a contact.
Okay. All right. And you know Mr. Lazarus as well? Do you know him? You spoke with him, so I think...
Not well. I know of him quite a lot, but...
I'm familiar with him.
Okay. With that then, it seems as though we have three appointments to make. Peter Church, Vera Cohen, and Andrew Somarco.
One of you can say so, move.
Well, Vera Cohen is here. I don't know if it makes sense for, do you have anything to add to your...
I mean, I guess I skipped that Vera as somebody who is, is on the committee and reapplying. I assumed there was nothing to stand up for, but if you'd like to, do you have something to add?
I haven't spoken to Art Lazarus, and it's fine. People reject him, but I think he's had plenty, and the best he can do is probably advise us, but it would be nice for him to hear from the board.
I can't make motions here.
Well, I believe so moved was banded about, so I'll do that.
Okay. Is there a so seconded?
So seconded?
There's been a motion made in the second to appoint Vera Cohen, Andrew Somarco, and Peter Church to the, to the Open Space and Recreation Plan Implementation Committee. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you, Vera.
Okay. Let's jump on to the public hearing that was cabled for five minutes, it was straight on three-seven, but we'll move on to that. So, we have several, several goals here, and I think we can take them one section at a time. I can read them. I think the one thing I am confused about, or I wanted clarification on, is are we gonna vote whether or not we want these as our goals, and whether we don't want to put them forward? There were, I know the last time there was some discussion that some of these were not a hundred percent agreed upon, and maybe the wording has changed that, but are we gonna vote on these to implement them?
I think in order, I think that's what we need to do, yeah.
Okay. If there's any, if there's a disagreement, I mean, a lot of them I think were right on board, that most of us are gonna agree with, but there's a few that we may disagree on.
I think a lot of it is, perhaps we're gonna have a little discussion about each one, and whether they indeed want to stay, and whether we have any disagreement, and to get sort of work like the budget line items at town meeting. If we don't have a disagreement, then we put it into one package and we vote.
Okay. So, shall I read all eight of economic development and go from there, or you want to read one? I think, I think that's the easiest way to go, and get those all out on the board, and if there's one that we want to talk about, we can do it like that, and then we can, we can talk about them briefly and then bring it up to the...
Mr. Chair, when, when, where does the public input?
At the end of each section, I just said. I didn't, I kind of trailed off. I would go through, I'd read them all if we had any discussion on them, and then after, right after each section, we'd open it up to them, or at the same time, back and forth. Let's try one and see how it goes.
Well, are we going to discuss the merits, or was our goal tonight just to officially enter it into the goals?
I think the merits may be, but I think the implementation is one thing that we, a lot of times we get, we get trapped on. We end up talking about, well, how are we gonna do this? And that's beyond the scope right now. We just have to finalize wording and determine if we want it to be a goal, and then, got three sections in here, but it's for the public.
Because what we have here this year is quite a large list of things to do, and many of them will sort of merge together as it develops, but if we sort of look at what staff limitations we have, what limitations we have in Keith, as much as he works, pretty close to twenty-four hours a day for this stuff, it begs the question of prioritizing, and how are we gonna handle that?
Well, we do have a secondary list that we used before, which keeps them, you know, keeps them at eye level. The ones that we don't think we can get to this year, those are kept at eye level. You can see we have four of them from last year, so...
I think it's, I think it's a manageable list, at least from my perspective, and that what, maybe what we want to do is, once you hear the public input, you vote to adopt your set of goals that for a future meeting, and as the chair suggested, we ought to spend some quality time here talking about implementation. And part of that can be that I and the staff can bring back plans to do that, just to take the affordable housing one as an example. It's not gonna happen just at a staff level. It's probably gonna require, you know, reformation of a committee or establishing a local housing partnership or something. We can, we could, we can be getting to that as a, at a future meeting. Tonight would be, here's the things that you want us to work on, and then for the future, we can talk about, well, here are some methods and plans for how we can move ahead.
Okay. All right. Well, let's cut to the chase, and we can start with economic development, and I will read the eight goals, and we can comment on them, and then open up to the public and see how that works. One A, Littleton Common Areas A and B Implementation. Completion of mass works improvements, opening of a point, work with mass DOT on left-hand turn at Town Center, Route 110. Bike lanes, bike access, bike racks at Town Center, motorcycle moped parking in Town Center. Encourage property owners to clean up their storefronts. One B is Littleton Common Sewer Planning Outreach. Continue support for Littleton Common Sewer Feasibility Study Committee. Bring Littleton Common Sewer Feasibility Study Committee and No Sewer Stakeholders together to work on collaborative presentation to the voters. Littleton at the Crossroads Planning Initiative. Refocus economic development effort on the, on the area of Taylor and Foster Streets. Littleton Common Area C Planning with Initiative with Zoning Bylaw Working Group with Planning Board, Agricultural Commission, Extensive Recreation, et cetera. Transportation Commuter Rail. Implement Crosstown Connection Regional Transportation Management Association. Design Shuttle Service to connect commuter rail, promote additional parking for residences. Shop Littleton Initiative. Explore with local businesses. Continue economic development planning process for air road, including the FIBA technologies. Economic Development Policy. Policy Discussion with Finance Committee Planning Board. Develop marketing plan to attract high-tech administrative small corporations. Implement zoning to allow neighborhood micro-stores and address empty building syndrome with inventory of existing vacant buildings.
Sites, owners, and zoning status. That was a suggestion that I made. We need to know who owns it and how they own it and how it's held. I think it just got cut off.
Okay, okay.
One H, I would like to...
Sure, one H?
Yep. Because that's the one you just went off, and I noticed it as I read it. It says small corporations, but I would like to see some wording in there that talks about small, locally-owned businesses.
Okay. Just right after corporations?
Yeah, some will be corporations, some will be, you know, something else, LLCs or whatever, but...
I'd like to reword one B. The Littleton Common Sewer Feasibility Study Committee is preparing to hold a, to have a presentation, and everyone will be invited, not just the non-sewer stakeholders, so I'd like to just stop at the semicolon. Littleton, so we read, Littleton Common Sewer Planning Outreach. Continue support for Littleton Common Sewer Feasibility Study Committee.
Why, why are you opposed to the folks in the self-titled No Sewer Group sitting down with this group and having a discussion with one another?
I'm not, we've, we've done it, but I don't think the feasibility study committee wants to get into a collaborative presentation when they already have a presentation to present. If they would like to have people discuss, and if anybody were to approach us, we probably would, but I think that's, that's the word that we're getting from.
That's what I...
That's what we discussed, that's the word that we discussed, that there would be no debate, so to speak, held and moderated by somebody else. It would be, we're gonna give our presentation, and that's, we'll invite people to comment at that period, at that time. That's what I'd like to amend.
So, you would take out all of that last piece?
Yes.
Well, the reason why I had suggested this is because I've sat with Megan Ford, who is the chair of that committee, and I've heard from folks in the, again, self-titled No Sewer Group, and I listened to both presentations, and they sound like they're talking about apples and oranges. And for me, as a voter, how am I to vote and make a choice on something if I'm being told two different things? I hear the No Sewer folks, and I think we should never have a sewer. I hear the, this committee, and think we absolutely need to have a sewer. So, I, how could I make an informed decision if I'm being told that the sun is shining and, you know, the moon is out? It's confusing for people, and that's why I suggested a collaborative presentation on sort of the bare facts. And then the feasibility committee can say, if we don't do sewer, here's what could happen. And the No Sewer folks could say, if we do do sewer, here's what could happen. And then the voter could make a decision as to what sort of risks he or she wants to take. And I'm pretty sure that the feasibility study committee is at our behest, and we can tell them, you, I mean, Keith said this last time, we can, in essence, order them to sit down and talk with the other folks.
That's fine. I am not into ordering committees to do certain things when they've been appointed to do things, but I've also sat right here and invited the leaders of the No Sewer, and they have, didn't even answer my questions, ignored me like I wasn't even here. We've invited them to several meetings. Every meeting, they know they're welcome, and they haven't been to any of the meetings, so there isn't even a foundation for that. There isn't any type of foundation. But my point is that to bring this, the committee and the non-sewer stakeholders together work on a collaborative presentation process, I will just say that the feasibility study committee is already preparing a process to give a presentation. At that point, if we are approached and someone wants to make any other presentation, I would expect that we would take it, and it would be much like the main meeting where they would, anybody would be allowed to speak. So, that's...
Here's, here's my concern and I don't know whether the wording should be taken out, left in. I guess I haven't gotten to that point yet, but, um, there is clearly a group of people who are opposed to the sewer planning. There probably are some common facts that both sides can agree upon. But the townspeople are going to be presented with, or, or it isn't, it's impossible, it's possible for the townspeople to be presented with, uh, a committee, um, having one set of values to present for recommendation, um, and an activist group having another set of, of values, um, to present to the townspeople. Um, and anything we can do to overcome that and create the sense of understanding so that the voters have a better choice, a more informed choice to make, we should do. Because the place to fight this out is not on town meeting floor when a vote has to occur. Yes, there'll be people who speak for, there'll be people that speak against, but the two well-organized groups could be at odds. And I think it's our job to sort of sort through that if we can.
I disagree that it's our job. Once we commit, once we appoint a committee to do something, I believe it should be left up to that committee unless there is a gross negligence, a gross inappropriate, um, management.
Well, I think if we're going to serve the committee well, we need to seek this path too. Because, um, you know, we, we've been here before with the crematory study committee. They did a lot of work. They did a lot of research. They put heart and soul into it. Um, they had a product in the end that thought the town would like and the town simply didn't buy it. And part of that was understanding, part of it was just having a sense of the townspeople that whether they just wanted anything to do with this. And, um, that I know that committee members felt a little frustrated at the end of that because it did a lot of work. And nobody's ever going to take that away from this committee or any other committee that does so much hard work. Um, but the townspeople may not agree. Um, so for the sake of the committee as well, this kind of information going back and forth so it's better understood, it should be helpful to them too.
I can't say it again. I can't say my words again. I mean, uh, if, if, if you are up to rewording the goal to be more of what the committee plans on doing, um, that's fine. If we want to, uh, say, uh, support the Littleton Common Sewer Feasibility Study Committee's, uh, public presentation and encourage them to, um, allow, uh, people to, um, make additional presentations, uh, something like that, although redundant because, um, and, because that's what's planned to do, that's fine. Um, if there's anything that orders them to do anything, any committee to do anything, I would be against that. So.
I guess what I would suggest is, uh, I, I think the only word I have a problem with is collaborative. Whether we can get the two, or two groups to stand aside by sentence, this is our collective, um, opinion to offer to the town. That, I think that's a reach. And, um, but I do think that we have to, uh, make clear to the committee that, that, you know, this, this is a considerable, um, group that has concerns that could well impact the voters' decision-making process and that they should involve this group.
Are you saying that they don't know that because we have to tell them that? If we tell them that, you know, you have a big impact on what's going to, on the town by making any type of recommendation and you must listen to other town people who may be against that, I think that's kind of demeaning because there's a bunch of intelligent people on that who understand that.
But there are also a bunch of intelligent people who have done research otherwise, who'd like to have equal time to present their information as they've brought it together. And the, at last check, it was $558,000 that would be borrowed from all of us taxpayers to pay for something that eventually is going to serve businesses in town.
And, um, they will have time, if they wish, to work, to come, how about, how about we can, we can support the Littleton Common Sewer Feasibility Study Committee's, uh, public presentation and, uh, you know, request that they openly invite and encourage, um, opponents to make their own presentation.
I, I don't know what it means to support the Littleton Common Sewer Feasibility Study Committee. What does that mean? That I have to say as a member of this board, I think it's a great idea? What does that support mean?
No, to give them support, to encourage them to respond to any questions, to make their committee changes, to, um, to continue to allow, to continue with the committee, to allow them to continue their work.
Oh, so, so don't disband the committee? Is that another way of saying that? Is that what you mean?
That's one of the supports. Mr. Delphi Orde.
Couple of comments on this one. Uh, one of the things you've got to be a little careful of is the committee may be morphing into a sewer advocacy committee and that's.
It is clear that it's not, Jerry.
I know, but.
They're very adamant about that.
But that is public perception.
That brought on by other people, right.
Fair enough, but I'm saying it's still public perception. And in many ways, it's in the committee's interest to have something like a voter, like a, uh, the legal women voters, uh, candidates night. Because I'll tell you, I, my mind was changed a lot at their last presentation. But, you know, if it looks like, you know, the selectmen are supporting the committee and the committee is advocating the sewer, then you're going to have a big problem on town meeting floor.
Right. And this, that's the part of the misperce, part of the perception that's gotten out there is that there is no support of sewer right now. It's to, to continue this, the feasibility of it.
Right.
There is no support.
Right. And I think what people are looking at is the whole wasted good money after bad syndrome. Once you.
No, I know, I know, I know, I know, yeah. I know, yeah. But, um, I feel for our goal, you know, I mean, there's already a public presentation scheduled there and, you know, if you want to take out support and just say encourage the Littleton Sewer Common Feasibility Study Committee to, um, continue their public information, um, projects or public information, um, goal and to invite, uh, opponents to their present, to make a presentation at their, uh, meeting in September or November. When it's September, I'll probably.
Uh, one other comment. A number of years ago, the Wreckin' Park Commission was pushing for a soccer field. They used town funds in a targeted mailing to get their supporters in. And would this committee make, or would this board make a position that they will not, that town funds will not be used to either advocate or not advocate?
You can talk to them. They haven't made that. I mean, what we have talked about is we are not about an advocate. We, we are not ever going to tell anybody any way to vote. We are go, we are there to put information out.
Okay, so any mailings you put out would be neutral and formative, only not say, vote yes or no.
Well, that's, so, so really what's at stake, I don't think we're telling the committee to stop working. I, I think, you know, what's worded in this goal is the committee continues its work. I think that, I think we all, we all agree to that. What the added words seem to say is, but understand that there are, as some very committed individuals that are, are opposed to this. Um, and it needs to be understood more than just they exist, but they need to be understood. Now, and the benefactor of gaining that understanding are the voters who are the ones that are going to tell us one way or the other which way we're going to go.
And I'd like to see both, uh, presentations be given equal time.
I'm not ready to say equal time. I mean, what happens, what if we have only, you know, this Littleton's Common Sewer, we only take up 10 minutes, but No Sewer goes 20 minutes. Does that mean we have to fill it with 20 minutes?
No, no, equal time, equal time.
Well.
Equal time.
How would define, define equal time for me? So I can understand.
So if you had, if you had 10 minutes and the No Sewer folks knew that you had 10 minutes, they could choose to do 10 minutes or they could choose to do 20 and you could have 10 minutes of rebuttal. See, you can't even, you can't even agree on how much time for an agreement.
Because I don't want to limit them. I don't want to limit anybody. If, if we speak for 10 minutes, I don't want to say, you know, the opponents, you all, you can only speak for 10 minutes and then.
Then if you don't want to limit anyone, you do your presentation to the best of your ability and they can do theirs to the best of their ability.
Exactly, exactly. Why do you want to limit time?
I, I don't want to see them not have the same amount of time. I don't want to see.
Oh, come on, that's insulting. That is insulting. I, I, that's insulting to say that the committee, a town committee that I'm on is going to say, okay, we're going to make a half hour presentation. You guys got five minutes. That's not going to happen.
It's not going to happen.
No, it wouldn't happen. That's insulting to say that to me.
Ted.
Or to my committee.
You know what?
Or our committee that I'm on.
You're easily insulted.
I am, it's, it's a blessing.
Asking that it be fair. You're, you're saying.
Then you're calling me a not committee, not fair.
Yeah, but you're saying that this goal that I, that I suggested is not something that, that you find tolerable. They could come to your meeting and sit with you and listen to what you have to say. But you're not willing to sort of go to neutral territory and sit and talk with them.
We've done that. We, that's, that's wrong.
And that's fine.
That is wrong to say that, Jenna, because we have invited them. They have come to our meetings. We've had the chair sit down with the, the head of the No Sewer Group and had discussions. I've said, I've asked the head of the No Sewer Group here about it and he has refused to answer my question, to refuse to come and meet with the committee. He has also refused to meet with Bob Zimmerman, our, one of our consultants and a resident online. So I think that, all I, I mean, all I'm saying is to, to reword this a little bit so that it's more, um, more aligned with what the committee actually is planning to do.
Okay, so then we can say Littleton Common Sewer Planning Outreach. Littleton Common Sewer Feasibility Study Committee continues its work. Right? I think we can all agree that it can be, continue its work. But I, I don't think this board should either support or disband in any way, shape or form. They, they are intending on doing a presentation at the fall special town meeting.
Prior to, prior to. I'm sorry, I went off to your train of thought. Go ahead.
So I understand that there'll be benchmark presentations done, but there'll be a vote taken at town meeting. Are you saying that there won't be a presentation at town meeting?
I have no control over that. I mean, a presentation by us or a presentation by the No Sewer people?
By, by you.
Of, by the, of course there will be. If you're asking for $500,000, you've got to have a presentation.
Okay, so there'll be presentations prior to town meeting and at town meeting?
Yes.
Okay, so I think that it's fair to say that the expectation, we cross out this, this line here that was my suggestion and say, you know, ensure that the, uh, the No Sewer folks are given an opportunity to make a presentation at special town meeting as well. And if they want to have benchmark meetings where they make presentations along the way, they, they certainly could do that on their own.
The actions at special town meeting and the presentations that leave are up to the moderator. So I think to meet the intent of your format here is to say, continue its work and encourage the Littleton Common Sewer Feasibility Study Committee to invite opponents to present at their meetings. I'm, no, yeah.
I, I think where we want to get here is, uh, Jenna made an important point. Do we want this outside group to play by the committee rules or neutral set of rules? And where I want to get is a neutral set of rules where, where, um, where we get to see, um, different viewpoints, exercise themselves and inform the voters, hopefully, that's the, that's the end result that we want. Informed voters that will make the right choice. I don't know what that choice will be, but if they make it, it's the right choice. So what I want is the neutral. I don't, I don't, I don't want to see, well, they can come to our meeting and, and if they can comment to what we say and so on and so forth. Um, you know, this is clearly a group that has the attention of the public and we need to recognize that. And we need to make sure that everything that is presented gets presented so that the townspeople can make informed choices.
I agree with you.
Lay it out then, lay it out. Um, excuse me, I have to get some more. Lay, go ahead and put your wording in there and we'll see what you come up with. Reword the goal and we'll see what comes up later. Oh, Jerry, I'm still in the room. Does that count?
Can we get some public input? Or do we have to first?
I'm sorry. I, I want to go only on complete goals, not on, so that they're clear and concise to the people.
Okay, so Littleton Common Sewer Planning Outreach, I don't even know what planning outreach means there, but can we just have Littleton Common Sewer Feasibility Study Committee continues its work and that the board makes a recommendation to the moderator that he provide equal time or full time or whatever phrasing you want at special town meeting to make whatever presentation it deems appropriate?
Okay.
I think that will happen a lot.
Yeah, it's going, that's going to happen anyway.
Would you vote that?
Well, that's fine, but we.
Because that's the way the moderator wants it.
Yeah, do we, what we do want, so do we want to tell them to do it anyway? That's the thing, do we want to? So, given the new information, do you want to rephrase your wording?
What I would like to see is LCSFSC and the No Sewer folks, whomever, how they want to identify themselves, sit in a circle and talk to each other and be able to come together with a foundational presentation to the town or even a fact sheet that they could all agree upon. And I hear you saying, well, it's impossible. We can't do it. And maybe the No Sewer folks would say, it's impossible. We can't do it. But we're going to be left in the position that I was left in when I sat with Megan Ford and listened to her presentation and when I sat with No Sewer folks and listened to them and thought, I don't know what to decide because I don't know what the foundational facts are. And you know what's going to end up happening? All, all the sewers committee work is just, for lack of a better phrase, going to go down the toilet because, because people are going to say, I don't, I can't pick this because it's new and it's different and it's scary. So they're going to end up having, you know, a zero at the end of all of their work because people will choose no change over change they don't understand.
So what I have as goal, rephrased, something similar to this, correct me where I'm wrong. Littleton, uh, support the Littleton Common Sewer Feasibility, uh, support the continued work of the Littleton Common Sewer Feasibility Study Committee and recommend to the town moderator to allow an opposing presentation on, on town meeting floor.
I, I don't know that we want.
Wait, 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 I'm sorry. Is that pretty much what you, is that where we're at for right now?
It has, it has been watered down to that, yes.
That's what you are, okay.
Well, I disagree with making a recommendation to town moderator. I think this is a board goal and, you know, this board has to take the open, open-minded posture and everything it has to do with that. So recommending the town moderator is only part of this.
So you, wait a minute. So you said you're against recommending town moderator, then you said it's part of this. So are you?
It's only part of it. The answer to equality is not asking the town moderator to give them equal time. The answer is that it's our position that they be given all equal time and due consideration and that that occur at the board level, at the committee level, at the moderator level, at, and anywhere that facilitates the communication.
Okay. Would you like to put that in, can you put that into words somehow so?
I'm not sure. I know how to put that into words.
To get into, to get into the goal, so. Do you have words for that? Alex, you want, you want to take a comment? I can take some comments while you work on putting that into, into the goal. Ms. Pratt.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Alex Pratt, Bridge Road, not speaking as members of the New York NBC tonight. I haven't been too involved in this issue, so please interject if I say something that's not, uh, not factually correct, uh, not a foundational fact. But because the, uh, the Sewer Feasibility Study Committee is not an advocacy group, I'm carrying you correctly. It's not an advocacy group, uh, wouldn't that mean that they wouldn't necessarily be opposed to, wouldn't that mean that there should hypothetically be either members on a committee who are opposed to sewer and members who are on that committee who are pro-sewer? Because it's a, it's not an, it's not advocating one way or another. So I don't see how the opposition group comes into play there because they both, because it's not an advocacy committee, it shouldn't really come into effect. Now, I'm all for, I'm 100% behind, you know, allowing any group that's interested to speak on this issue time at town meeting. Um, I will, I think the moderator would, you know, figure out the definition of equal time for us, you know, and use his own, you know, his own discretion to make sure that it's done in a fair and open process. I, I have faith in that, whether, you know, we want to pursue that route as a board, that's, you know, up to the board. But as a question of whether or not we should have a collaboration between the opponents of sewer and, uh, and the study committee, it kind of seems to me like it's, it's not, you know, if, if it's not an advocacy committee, why, why is there such a, you know, such a fuss between, between the two groups? If it's not an advocacy committee, why do we need to, why do we need to have this town study committee meet with these opponents? Um, I mean, one, one way, one way we could. I mean, one, one way, one way we could address all these issues for both private citizens who are either pro or anti-sewer would be to simply just have public comments at the Sewer Feasibility Committee, which I'm sure, you know, happens. I don't see, I don't really have an issue with that. As long as information is provided publicly, which I'm sure, you know, has, I don't see what the issue is. Speaking with Megan Ford, the, the chair of the, the study committee, she has said that the, that it's not an advocacy group. There are members who are opposed, and members who are, you know, in support of the sewer, and probably a lot of members who are unsure at this point. I see that as fine. I don't see it as being a, being an issue of advocacy. If it's not, if it is indeed not an advocacy group, I don't see why they, there's a lot of argument between the opposition group and I think that's neutral.
I don't know why, I don't why, there is, I don't know why there's a perceived argument. You know, we get questions in writing from people who are against it and we answer them and we post them on the website as, yeah, we add them to our frequently asked questions because we don't, you know, that's, we just feel that's the best way to do it. We invite them to our meetings and as far as getting people on there who are against it and people are for it. I've been working on that committee for what now, like two and a half years? And I don't know what, you know, who else is, is, you know, who's in favor of continuing the sewer, the feasibility study and who's against it. We also are going under a restructuring, I believe it's coming up at our next meeting, or the meeting on the 27th. So just so everybody knows, uh, Megan Ford, uh, is about two houses down, I imagine you were watching on TV.
Everybody's, yeah.
You just ran down here. But as far as, you know, the perception, you know, the perception about why there's such infighting, there is no infighting. We get questions, we answer them, and we try to get the information out to them and, and we, we return emails and do that thing. The other thing is about getting people on there against, we're going, who may be against it or for it. We're going again, we're going up for restructuring because we had a couple of people resign and we had, we advertised to fill that position. We got two applications. What we made the recommendation is to change the structure of the committee and bring those people on. I haven't met them, I looked at their, well, I haven't met one of them, but one of them I haven't met and talked to much. But looking at her resume, she seems qualified, she'll throw her on there. I didn't interview her to see if she's for or against. Um, and, you know, um, you know, the, the other applicant, I, I, I haven't spoken to him, so I don't know. And just one more, we have, I have directly invited Mr. Crystal by email personally to get on the committee when we've had an opening, and he has been against this from probably, I wouldn't say day one, but maybe day five, he's been against this. And it, it hasn't happened. So I think the committee is doing its best to, to invite all people to serve on the committee and to make their presentation.
It sounds like there's a, there's a, you know, there's been an effort on behalf of the, of the study committee to ensure that there is, if not, you know, open collaboration, certainly an open forum for members to come forth, members of the public to come forth and discuss these issues. And maybe that's a way to go about finding a way to create a fact sheet or some sort of foundational fact that we all can agree on. I guess, I guess to me, hearing what you've, you've just said, it sounds to me like the collaboration issue has been, you know, pretty spot on. Maybe there are a couple of things here and there that need to be improved on each, on every side of the aisles, you know, pros, con, neutral. But overall, I feel like the collaboration efforts or the open forum efforts have been, you know, fairly positive. The only thing I would say going forward, I, I like the comments about equal time at town meeting and about not spending town funds in either a pro-s sewer or anti-s sewer perspective. If we could word that into the goal, maybe it's redundant, um, maybe we would put, you know, some of the town anxieties at rest anyway. I don't think we're gonna spend too much money on a couple of extra words in here.
Yeah, and, and they do have, the sewer committee does have their own budget and there are, and I don't, I can't remember if we have information mailers, but I know there's stuff we're gonna try to do with water and just to advertise, to make sure people know about the information session.
And it would just be good to make sure that there's no public money on advocacy.
Yeah, right, right, yeah, yeah, on advocacy, yeah, yeah. Ms. Crystal, since I named you, well, go ahead.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd be very, I'm just wondering, this is a exercise for the goals for this year. It's a goal, this is a goal study. I see no objection to the word collaboration being in the goals. It's a goal, it's not a bylaw. I mean, if in fact, in reality, there's a collaboration, great. If there isn't, that's what happens. There's a lot of things in this list you're not gonna make this year. So I don't know why we're talking for 20 minutes about the word collaboration. It's simply a goal, and I think we just ought to go with it as written, and we ought to move forward. Because right here, what you're doing is fighting the sewer battle right now in this role, and it's wasting time. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. John Kelly.
I'm John Kelly, Five Mill Lane. Look, you're trying to regulate people's opinions and the way that they go about their business. I've never seen in all of the infrastructure projects and committees that have been tasked with overseeing a demand for equal time for an opposing force. So this is a first for me to, to see the governmental board requesting the opposing group to their committee to be heard. But at any rate, why don't you appoint a committee that opposes the sewer?
Yeah.
You'll have an advocacy group for the, for the sewer. You could have people for, on the current committee go over to the other side or vice versa, and you'd be able to have evening time.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I think the biggest problem that I have with this, which I, I'm all for sitting around in a circle and collaborating and having a conversation, which I have had with members of the No Sewer Group. But the biggest problem that I have is that their group is a private group that does not meet openly and does not abide by open meeting law, such as the town-appointed Littleton Commons Sewer Feasibility Study Committee, which does, takes minutes, it's all public, anyone's welcome to come. Everyone knows everything that goes on there. Information is open to the public. So if we're going to, as a town or as the Board of Selectmen, invite a private group to come and talk, I think that's a little risky because you didn't appoint them. So I think Chief Kelly brings up a good point, that if you want to hear from them, then do it officially. Have, have the town appoint another group or another study or something. I think that they had every opportunity to join our committee. We've just had two vacant vacancies that are hopefully gonna be filled soon and people from that group could have been part of this committee. And it's a public, open committee that is not private and doesn't meet in the dark somewhere. Which I think it's great that there is that group in this town and I love it, but I think that they should have a way of maybe picketing or doing something else, but sharing a public forum with a publicly appointed committee, I think maybe not, isn't really the way to do it. So there might be some other way to do it or some other place or time, but.
So I spoke about, you know, obviously inviting them to speak at the public hearing. I mean, I mean, is that redundant or is, you know, would you be open to allow them to get up and show some slides as well?
Perfectly fine with that, but I don't think that it should be presented as this is a town-appointed committee or group.
Oh, well, yeah, we can make that.
You know, I, I don't, I'm trying to think of other advocacy groups or other oppositional groups for other, like, hot topics and hot issues and how it's done. It's usually not done in an organized fashion that we're talking about. So it's something that I think is, is a novel idea and we have to really, you know, think about it, but.
I think, I think we have to pull back a little bit here. And, and the, the point is the goal, not that each of the individual action items that are gonna occur to achieve the goal. What we want to do is, is, is get an open, formatted goal. So that everybody understands, all sides, we're interested in all sides. And the reason we understand that is because if we don't, then we have all sorts of misinformation that occurs in a vote that is, that it may occur in a certain way that is just out of skepticism of the voters. I mean, Littleton voters are pretty through it about saying, hmm, we're not quite sure this is right yet, go back. And, you know, and again, we have to look at the lesson of the, of, of the work that we did for the Crematorium. A lot of hard work was done, a lot of facts were presented, but it boiled down to one thing, that the public wanted. And, and they chose no. And.
So it's a lesson in there.
So we, so we should take that lesson and say, okay, we have to have more than just facts. We have to have more, we have to recognize that some people are just gonna wanna say, no, we don't want it. And take that responsibility to do the best we can in informing the voters about how they might best vote. So towards that end, I think we have to, we have to back off a little bit about the individual things and get back to what in the statement of this goal is permissive to the open type of atmosphere we want. Is that a safe assumption?
Yes, did you get it into words?
I'm not sure I did, but.
So we're ending at the special town meeting floor and then we have, okay.
So, um, continue to support the work of Littleton Commons Sewer Feasibility Study Committee and to recognize and seek the input of the so-called No Sewer Advocates as part of that process.
Can I change, just say opponents instead of No Sewer? So-called No Sewer, just say opponents.
Yeah, I was using so-called because.
Yeah, but I think.
The, the sewer committee gets the pro-s sewer so-called and the non-s sewer gets the No Sewer so-called, so I just.
No, please, as selectmen.
We don't know which they actually are in the end.
Right, please, the selectmen, I would appreciate, we don't call the sewer committee as the pro-s sewer. That's why I was just saying, opponents of the, uh, continuing, continuing this feasibility study committee, feasibility study. Okay. So continue to support the Littleton Commons Sewer Planning Outreach, Sewer Feasibility Study Committee Planning Outreach and to, um.
Not necessarily outreach, the work of, that's part of their work.
Okay, word up.
It's part and parcel to their work.
All right. Continue to support the work of the Littleton Commons Sewer Feasibility Study Committee and to recommend to the town moderator to allow an opposing presentation on special town meeting floor to require that no public money be spent on endorsing the, no, advocating for the Sewer Feasibility Study Committee or advocating for, for a vote and to recognize and seek input of opponents of the, opponents of continuing the feasibility study.
See, I don't think we need to do all that in the goal.
Okay, that's what I'm saying, that's where I, that's where.
So, so to take out all the town moderator.
Jenna added that in there and you added words to it, so I'm trying to put it all together.
Recognizing, um, the importance of and seek, you know, recognize the importance and seek the input of the, of the, I don't know what we would call them.
Opponents.
Sewer opponents.
Of opponent, of opponents to the, to continuing the sewer feasibility study.
And then as part of the goal, however, we want to massage that and say, well, we want to send a thing to the town moderator or ask the question, are you gonna give them equal time, so on and so forth. We don't have to have all that spelled out in the goal.
I agree too, but that's what, that's, that's where we were when you added to.
Excuse me, Mr.?
We don't need to have that, you're pulling that, okay.
Would it need to be any more complicated than just continuing to support the work of the committee, including outreach to sewer opponents?
Recognizing and seeking input of sewer opponents, something like that is, I think where Alex was going with that.
And basically keep the statement in there, no money will be spent on.
Well, yeah, okay.
No, no, but we can, that's a policy decision, that's, that's not a goal.
Yeah, okay.
Excuse me?
Do I give it to us one more time, please? I'm sorry.
Well, I, I just had, continue to support the work of the study committee, we'll put the full name in, including outreach to sewer opponents.
You okay with support?
I just, I have one more suggestion, if I may.
Okay.
Um, in addition to opponents, could we also put sewer advocates in there just to be fair? Because I have, I have met a lot of people who are pro-s sewer, and if the opponents are, are willing to talk, maybe we should invite people that are pro-s sewer.
Opponents and advocates. All right, supporters.
Ms. Coughlin. Ms. Coughlin.
John Coughlin, Coughlin, uh, I just want to express my opinion as far as the word opponents. I, I take offense to that because it sounds like you folks are with the Littleton Feasibility Study and the No Sewer, called No Sewer Group, is the opponent, so we're the bad guys. That's, that's how I would read it if you put it in print. So I take offense to that. And the other thing I just wanted to say, that when the vote was going to happen on May 11th, the feasibility study pulled it on April 8th, I believe it was, that they pulled it. And before that.
We're, we're going an hour on this one thing, Ms. Coughlin, and I just don't want to, I want to keep, I want to stick to the goal. I understand you're having some concerns about what happened there.
Right, now we're talking about the goal.
But do you have, well, do you have another word that you would suggest instead of opponent? Because, you know, you have people, you have, I mean, if they're against it, so how do you use, you have no.
Pro-poners.
Pro-pon, but there's, pro-poners are usually in support of something and these, we want to make sure that we invite people who are not in support of things.
Uh, okay. Help me out, what, what can we use rather than?
Interested parties?
Well, could you, could you say, including outreach to the No Sewer Group and other stakeholders?
I just hate to label them because there's people who are gonna be against it and why not try No Sewer?
Well, and other stakeholders, suggesting. You call themselves No Sewer, so why can't I say that?
I'm just trying to be inclusive.
So getting back to the goals, what you've just read is fine, we, we can live with it.
With opponent? Using the word opponent or not using?
No, not, not opponent, it's just offensive to.
No Sewer Group and other stakeholders.
No Sewer Group and other stakeholders, okay.
Okay, one down.
Number two. Do we have, do you have anything on that, Jen? Are you okay with that, Alex?
Nope.
Okay. All right, so I read 10 others, I believe, or seven others. Do we have any other changes on any of these other ones, 1A through 1H?
1D, please.
Go ahead.
You know, we spent a little time tonight talking about the Open Space Implementation Committee. And we spent a little time talking about, we want the input of the AgCom and, you know, other open space groups. So I think we should include that committee in, in that one.
I'm sorry, open space in this 1D?
Yep.
Okay.
D, yeah. No, where was it? So who do you want to have?
Open space.
No, 1D, Littleton Common Area Seat Planning Initiative, zoning bylaw working group with Planning Board, Agricultural Commission, extensive recreation, et cetera, and we should include the Open Space Committee.
Okay, so if we put that.
If we're gonna include AgCom, we should include Open.
So right before Planning Board and Agricultural Commission, include Open Space and Recreation Plan Implementation Committee?
Yep.
Okay.
You, you can, but you don't have a representative from that group yet on the working group.
We don't have a representative.
Alex's suggestion is to add another committee, and I'm just pointing out, you've got a working group already that represents the select.
Oh, are you talking to AgCom?
Right?
Oh, you're talking specifically, that's talking specifically about that working group.
So you're looking to add yet another committee.
Member to the working group.
Member of which we have three, Vera, Peter, Andrew.
I thought it was a general statement, I didn't realize it was.
Well, I think Jim was pretty clear, he wanted to include the wording of agricultural permission. And I think if we're going to, if we're going to do that, then, then we need to also include the Open Space Implementation Study Committee.
So as far as.
Implementation Committee.
Also adding a member of that to the zoning bylaw working group is what keeps it.
Neither or both, as far as I'm concerned.
Correct, yeah.
So we're gonna, we're gonna restructure that committee? We're gonna restructure it, I'm sorry.
Yes, I agree. Either the Open Space, a member from that group be included in that, in the current working group of five, right? There are five of us, or we reduce our numbers to four.
To take out Ag?
Correct.
Yeah, that's fine. If you, if you guys go one way or the other, I would say, or take out Ag, because this, the whole way this started was supposed to, wasn't supposed to be a working group like this. It was supposed to be a negotiation session with Fletcher, so reducing Ag, you know, Ag out of that and not including Open Space is fine.
I'm fine with that as well. So it'll be two.
Yeah, I can go with that. So strike Ag.
So I guess on the July 22nd, we better add restructuring of the zoning bylaw working group, which was never actually appointed, but.
You're not re, took a vote, this board never took a vote for your two members.
What's that?
You didn't even take a vote.
I know, I know.
For the working group?
Right.
We most absolutely did, in the joint meeting.
No, you didn't take a vote. No. Planning board took a vote.
We did.
And selectmen did not. So, so I don't know if you want to take another vote to restructure a committee that you didn't put up in the first place.
So what would you, just disvai ag?
I think you should probably discuss with your co-committee planning board before you do that, so. But is that the goal, that you want to take the agricultural commission out of the zoning bylaws? Doesn't mean it's done tonight, it means that's the goal, yeah.
Okay, how about then it'd be review the Littleton Common Area C Planning Initiative zoning bylaw working group to consider inclusion of open space or removal of agricultural commission into that group? Just say, reconsider that, okay.
That's pretty specific, the whole, well, I think the goal ought to be about the work instead of having a narrow goal of which committee you're going to kick off and which one you're going to have on. I think the goal is the working group itself.
Continue the working group, yeah. I don't know, I didn't open this can of worms.
So procedurally, how do we deal with the worms now that they're canned?
Figure out what we, first of all, we're going to figure out what we want to do, do we want an open space or do we want agriculture, or do we not even discuss that and we want to just support those zoning bylaw working group? We've got to figure out what we want to...
I think you want to support, I think that the best thing to do is to support the zoning bylaw working group and you ought to, when you get together with that group again, discuss the composition of the committee, because it was done in cooperation with the planning board, I don't, and the goal is to bring proposed zoning amendments back, which goes through the planning board, so I'm not sure how, I'm not sure if you would want to change the composition of that group unilaterally. I think you'd want to have a discussion with the planning board, though.
Alex, is your proposal, so, is it a big change, I want to, I give you the last word or...
So I think the way you were the last time is the way to do it then, because all we're doing is indicating our preference in the process. And our preference would be to either include open space implementation committee or exclude ag comm.
Let the record reflect that Alex and I agree on something.
I'll have to change my opinion.
Okay. All right, anything else, a few more here. Any comments, I mean?
I'm Cindy Curran from Grimes Lane, 1C, I want to know if that advocates a specific agenda that's detailed somewhere or if this is just a general goal.
I believe it's a general goal, there's tools in the toolbox to focus economic development out there and I think we just want to make sure that we keep our eye on the ball and focus on it. Is that more understanding?
This is the one that I had, I had put in here, and yeah, I think we have, over the last few years, we've sort of looked at that area, underdeveloped buildings, underutilized buildings, we have a great initiative in a new train station there, so I believe it's time we focus some effort back in there to get occupancy in those buildings and we need to pay attention to what's going on so something undesirable does not occur there. And so as far as, you know, my thoughts on it is, let's, let's, let's get the magnifying glass back over that area and say, what can we do to redevelop, restore, re-encourage that area?
Okay, so you don't have a committee and you don't have a list somewhere that we don't know about?
No, I think this is the first step on getting to that point.
Yeah, the one on the Littleton at the Crossroads Planning Initiative, there's information at the town website because we had one facilitated meeting that was a year ago, and so the idea is to, is to reactivate that process, but there was a lot of work that was done initially, it is available on the website, and it's to sort of pick up that ball and get, and get back to the discussion we're starting to have with affected property owners and businesses in that area. And it's open as far as what might be the outcome.
That answer, it's a general goal.
Okay, yes. Okay. So do you want to vote one or just vote the whole, get the vote at the end? Because I think we're ready to move on to two.
While we have it in hand, let's vote on one.
What's that?
While we have it in hand, let's vote on one.
All right. John Kelly?
Are you voting to accept these goals for the entire board or are you voting on word, wordsmithing to present to the other two members?
We are adopting the goals tonight.
Public hearing, conduct a public hearing on the following goals identified in preliminary goal sections, comments there on, so it doesn't say that we're adopting, it says we're going to hold a public hearing. Typically, it does mean that we accept them as our goals.
That's the process that we outlined, I think, I think the board members who helped craft this, I mean, this list that's on the public hearing notice reflects what all five of you came up with at the hearing, so, at the initial goal setting.
Point taken that there's two people aren't here to, to vote for these, accept it as goals, so.
But in the past, I think we've had situations where we haven't had 100%, so who do you, how do you decide who's important and who isn't?
Well, I've always said that, I've always said, you can't, you can't keep scheduling anything until everybody's here, else, you know, some doesn't, things will never...
And even these, even this list was the product of consensus, not of, you know, creating each...
And I didn't hear from anybody on these, I'm sure if somebody had something that they were objected to or wanted, they would have said something, but thank you. Mr. Gaby, comments on economic development?
Sure, actually, I put together comments on quite a few of the goals and I had an impression at the last meeting that there might be a series of meetings, so even though I didn't submit something on Friday, because I was away, I actually have sent it electronically to Keith, my comments on quite a few of these, and I'm not quite sure what...
I didn't get anything.
You got it sent right around seven o'clock.
Okay.
The here person, because it said...
Don't assume that I've written them.
Of course, I don't assume you've written them, but I submitted them.
Good, good comments throughout, throughout the night, wouldn't see fit, but to let you know that I don't know where you got the idea or the understanding that it was going to be multiple hearings, this is the only one I understood that was going to be scheduled, was being involved in the process, the only lie I understood of.
Well, I raised it because that was my impression, before coming here, by name...
Do you have comments on the gold on? Will this stick to the, do you have one comment on these economic ones? I just want to really try and stay on track.
Yes, and I'm saying that I have been a little bit quiet here, because I know you're trying to come back to business, I know I'm slowing you down, but I do have comments on them and they're somewhat quite insightful, I do have comments on these. So if you want me to comment on every one you cover, I'd be glad to, but I'm trying not to make life complicated for you.
Right now we're on one, so knock them out, go ahead.
Okay, so let's, let's go. Some of the comments are less critical than others and I'll, I'll leave those aside for your reading because Keith actually does have it on, I assume you'll afford them. One of the questions I mentioned a little to come with sewer feasibility study.
Hold on, let me just interrupt what you just said. Anything that was submitted electronically after the deadline, don't assume that it's going to be heard at another, because as I just said, this is the, most likely the only meeting, so if you want your comments to be heard, your best bet is to say it tonight.
Well, I was in the process of doing that.
Well, no, you said there were some that you were going to mention because Keith, you sent them to Keith. I said that those you sent to Keith after the deadline will not have another opportunity to be heard, so you want to make sure that they're all, everything that you have to say is to be said tonight. I don't want you to have the impression that there's going to be another meeting for these other ones to be heard or another opportunity, this is your opportunity.
Got it. Okay, so for 1A, Littleton Common Area A and B, I just said there's a big community effort to encourage property owners to enhance and viewify areas such as around the Grand Littleton Common Area and make the public, the commercial spaces there more attractive and as walkable as best possible. I say that because I've tried to do this on the planning board and sometimes it's been ignored by actually some of the town leaders, so I think that's an important thing. 1B, we're Littleton Common Sewer Planning Outreach blah, blah, blah. It's been pointed out in previous meetings that 83 property owners within Littleton Common Park area for the sewer, you know, have indicated interest in the sewer, but they haven't contributed anything financially or made a commitment to date. And elsewhere, there's estimated it would take 606 sewer subscribers to break even. So, you know, this is not already indicate whether Littleton Common Sewer is financially feasible, you know, if only 83 without any commitment, say the one is 606 are needed. There needs to be a community agreed upon definition of what is meant by financially feasible. I say that as one that's been on the committee and wrote up documents, assisted in project planning and all sorts of definitions. To this day, I don't know what financially feasible is because it seems like it's already been answered. And so should not the public have paid some costs today, may future design work costs be included in the financial calculations? And should future costs be borne by those property owners who will benefit directly? That was my comment on that.
Don, before you go any further, I think maybe the way to address this, and it's your call, but is, if you feel that some of those comments is that you're making are fairly specific, and address something that can be addressed under the goal. If you think the goal is prohibitive of hearing those comments or taking into account those comments, I for one, that's what I'd like to hear, but, you know, we're not, if we, if we go through every little piece of this all the way through, you know, it's going to be a long night. But what I am seeking in the goals is the overhead, and if a goal is exclusive of something that's important, that makes it so it can't be done, or includes something that absolutely shouldn't be done, then that's what I think we need to discuss tonight, not so much the specifics of, you know, of a particular issue. If you think it should be in there and it doesn't allow for it, we definitely want to hear that.
Well, I guess...
Or let lightning strike twice, because I support that.
Yeah, let me just say 1B, I don't know what financially feasible means, it isn't defined and have we gotten there?
Yes, it is, it is defined, otherwise...
Well, I wrestled with that for quite a bit, but, okay, moving on. There's some comments that's worth reading, but I don't think it's going to change the goal or a particular thing. For 1D, Littleton Area C Planning Initiative zoning bylaw working group, planning board, ag comm, extensive recreation, I think it makes sense removing ag comm because it's like extensive recreationism of agriculture necessarily, and the thing that just really sort of don't frown me about the whole thing, and I guess, Teddy, you had mentioned the purpose of the working group is to negotiate with the Fletchers and this is zoning, that's spot zoning, and, you know, maybe window dressing on it, but, you know, spot zoning is illegal. It, it, it just amazes me because it's to circumvent rules and laws and, yeah, if you had transfer development right by law, trying to do it specific for that process might work, but it, it just amazes me. I mean, essentially, there's zoning laws out there and why are we negotiating, you know, for one particular property owner or four people related in a family?
Was that any of that?
Majority of the planning board sent, we should do that.
Well, it is better not.
And the bylaw, that's, the, the goal of the bylaw, Jenna, you can tell me if I'm wrong or back me up, but the, the goal of the bylaw is to address several properties, not just this property. So while it did start out that my understanding was the, was going to be a negotiating team to meet with the, with Fletcher family, it has now turned into, for better or for worse, I don't know, but it's turned into a rewriting of the bylaw to include several properties that need some, some certain standard.
But if you...
Wait, I'm sorry, am I correct? And are someone on the right track?
Someone on the right track, yes, Tim.
But of those properties, all over, four families...
Wait, no, 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 please, please, please focus on the goals, we've got to get out of here before midnight.
These aren't my goals, these are your goals.
I know, but focus on the goal, focus on the goal.
I am, and when it goes to land court, they refer to as window dressing, when you slice and dice something original into different ownerships to avoid spot zoning, so that's where I am.
I know, I know, but see, this is the thing, spot zoning has been addressed on this and we've been assured and we have attorneys that, so that's not speaking of the goal.
The goal is, the goal is about Area C.
Yeah.
And Area C was part of, was one of the proposals that was made by the MAPC in their, in their initial work on zoning for Littleton Common. And Area A and Area B are not spot zoning, they're, they're overlay, one's an overlay district, one's a rezoning. Area C is not, is multiple parcels of property and, and the approach was meant to be the same, that you look at a specific geographic area and that, that with some things that need to be considered differently than other parts of town, that's what we did with Area A and Area B, and we're having that discussion about Area C.
But right here, the chair had mentioned that the purpose was to negotiate with the Fletchers, the owner of just one area.
I said my understanding of the committee was originally to, to negotiate with the Fletchers. Let's continue with the goals.
Well, I just raised that and you can see my comments like, I'll also give them to the newspaper. Okay, other things are helpful to look at, but don't really merit the time here on the floor.
Appreciate that.
We'll be just, okay, so then, that's economic development, one.
Okay. So for one, do you want to vote, did you say? I thought you said you wanted to vote, which one of these, one we have in front of us, right?
Let's have one positive thing that we can say we've accomplished, let's do that, let's do...
Yeah, right, 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 so, go ahead, you got a motion?
Okay, move that the board of selectmen adopt as edited and amended section one of the goals, economic development.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. There will be a two-minute recess.
I think I have my phone up, I just missed the 100,000 dollar opportunity.
Why, Jafar, that's what we do here and you have the other things?
But some of this is...
She wants to, if we can work, that's something, since you're not, it just turns to go.
Does it make me to, very much wait for any of these things?
They're waiting for the other, so there's ways to measure. Last up on the town administration is all pretty much just for the stands.
I'm kind of stuff that's fairly quick, but we're going to have an emergency.
Next Monday night.
My question was, we need to bug me, I don't see any bug, any of that.
Somebody's here, the majority, they call that, yeah.
Hey, nice to see you, take care.
My workforce are going, oh my god.
I wish, I wish I could.
No, you don't, you don't. Hey, can I tell you about Dazzle Land?
Like, you'd be one of the 50 Gore indoctrinated...
Out of the first, the first...
That's awesome.
There's a training, see it, it can be...
I saw it at the theater, it was cool.
On the river, on the first one, yeah.
Right, that's, that's the city outdoors farm, that's for me.
So, please be advised that the, the selectors meeting is...
So, please be advised that the, the Selectmen's meeting is back in session. All right, we'll move on to Town Services, and we have six goals on this that are seeming more clear and concise, so let's see what we can get through here. Review and update the 10-year roadway improvement plan. Joint Municipal Schools Facility Assessment Project with PNTC Facilities Manager, first phase. Plans for 300 King Street with Park and Recreation Commission. Develop a sidewalk improvement plan with the planning board, including Russell Street, Shaker Lane. For the fire department, implement staffing increases, develop plans for facility improvements, mental health resources, town funding for SANS program. Alex, go ahead, you have anything?
I don't have anything on that.
Joe?
As for 2C, the 300 King Street, there is going to be, most likely in September, the building of the Aiden's Playground. And we as a board, I hope will accept the gift of the $50,000 playground from, from the Littleton Children's Fund, so we welcome it that. And with respect to 2D, the Shaker Lane, there was a discussion a bit about a crossing guard. Do we need to include, explore crossing guard in, in the goal?
Which one?
2D, at Shaker Lane, we talked about a-
Oh, for, including Russell Street and Shaker Lane, okay.
Yeah, yeah, but we had talked, the crossing guard came up when we were talking about the sidewalk, which, you know, crossing guard at Goldsmith. I don't know if that's, if that goes under Town Services or where that goes, but I know that during the organic discussion, that came up.
I would say that should probably be made a separate goal, and the crossing guard have its own- No, but, no, crossing, crossing guard its own.
So a 2G.
Investigate crossing guard.
At Goldsmith and Shaker. Who said that, though, was it Roxbury, West Roxbury?
Roarkford, West Roxbury.
Roxbury, okay.
All right. I, the, I'm sorry.
What's that?
All right. Crossing guard at, so I guess my only question about 2D is, develop a sidewalk improvement plan with the planning board, including Russell Street and Shaker Lane. I just don't know what that says to do, are we gonna go and, I guess, what does that say? We're gonna actually lay out, the, the layout where we want them and, you know, determine if we, I mean, has been determined that they're definitely needed and things like that, I mean-
Some of this work, you know, work might have, the preliminary stuff might have already been begun because back, well, quite a few years ago, they, they embarked on that, and that's what resulted in the sidewalks along Shattuck Street, Foster Street, you know, in those improvements in the sidewalk. So there might have been at that point a document that said, here's, here's the ones that need to be done. So it might be a matter of discussing off the old document and updating it.
So I'm wondering if it should be-
Revisit the sidewalk?
Yeah, revisit, yeah, revisit or, revisit or consider.
Well, it's been out like 12 years, so I don't know if we're revisiting after 12 years or not.
Well, revisit or investigate.
We could investigate.
Is that, what's it, give me another word.
I don't know, it sounds like you get cool equipment if you get to do an investigation.
You have computers and Drapson and things like that, yeah. Okay.
Well, what we're developing, we'd be developing is a plan. The plan could be, you know, here's our priorities, and this is what we're gonna afford, or whatever, you know.
Right, and I just don't know how much develop costs, you know, that's, I didn't, you know, I didn't know if we were committing funds to that, so, you know, I didn't want it, I didn't want it to say, develop a sidewalk improvement plan, and someone say, hey, well, we can't develop because we don't have the money. Well, why don't we look and see if we want one first, you know.
Consider a sidewalk.
Consider?
Consider a sidewalk.
Yeah, consider.
That's three.
Oh, you're gonna keep investigating there? All right, all right.
Times it with agrees.
Oh, three times, okay. All right.
So just repeat that one, please.
Oh, so 2D is, instead of develop, we would revisit, investigate, or in consider, or re-investigate, oh, I'm sorry, revisit or consider sidewalk improvement.
Just use consider, it's all encompassing.
You don't think revisit, there's nothing, okay, consider.
Calling it the sidestepping of sidewalk.
Yeah.
A Littleton Sidewalk Deasibility Study Committee.
I don't know if we need one, I think we need to develop a committee to see if we need-
Well, with the, with the no sidewalk.
Yeah, the no sidewalk.
You're just being sarcastic.
You're gonna put a motion on two?
Well, no, we haven't had public input yet, that's what we're here for. Does anybody have any input on, on two? This is Del Freire.
One quick question, what is the SANS program?
Well, Barbara Wickham is here tonight, and she can answer to you. Actually, the program that I'm talking about, SANS is now, which is the Sea and New Sun Foundation, and we're a nonprofit organization sent to here in Littleton, and we provide funding for suicide prevention activities in the schools, and we've been doing that now for quite a few years, not only in Littleton, but in about, oh, 50 or 60 other Massachusetts schools. And this year, and in February, we paid for MSPB Interface, which is a referral service and resource service for mental health issues. The idea is that a person needing mental health services can call one phone number and get a person on the other end who can either give them the resources or actually get them within two weeks' time is the, the hope, and most likely will happen. They get the services they need for the mental health issue they're dealing with. And at right now, SANS, Sea and New Sun, we do lots of things, not only this, but that's what I wanted to put forward right now. And so, we're paying for it, we paid for our first year for the town, the whole town, which includes the schools, everyone in town, including seniors, youth, the whole gamut, police department, fire department, anyone who needs those kinds of services can call the phone numbers. And we paid in February with some help from the DPH, County Public Health, $10,000 for, from this February till next February. And our hope and our, we definitely will pay the next one from February, but then, we come up against, we had talked with the boards, all the boards, many of the boards in town, most of them, including the police department and so many others, that we, it is our hope and our wishes that the town will then find that this service is, you know, used enough, and I'm sure it has been, and we will have a report of its use for 30 months at the end of this month. But we would like to see the town then pay for those services starting in, if I get the years right, February 2015. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Yes, it is. And so, I put this all down on a piece of paper, and it goes, that isn't here, so, that's my, you know.
Okay.
But here I am, so there, that's my spiel about SANS.
Okay. While we have you here, you said you were gonna develop a report for the first six months. Would you like to come, when would you be ready to come to the, to the board?
The report actually comes from the Massachusetts School of Professional Psychology. They are the ones that we are in contract with, who run this program. And my understanding is we will be getting a report at the end of July.
Okay. Would you like to come in on September 16th and provide a summary of that?
I would be very happy to. Let me write that down, so I can, and I'll get a, that'll be in the minutes, I know, September 16th. Okay. We'll do that.
Great, okay, so, not only, well, we have, we have funded, I said, we already accomplished a goal, but, thank you. Anybody else on two?
I move that we adopt number two as amended.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, on to organizational. 3A, review town code, bylaws and regulations included in codifying for the purpose of annual and special town meetings. Review policies and practices for the conduct of town meeting. 3B, procurement policies, townwide contracts, continue to review. Review Selectmen's goals, policies and procedures, perform a self-evaluation, schedule periodic updates on goals, have an all-boards meeting. Support the need of the town's senior population, sponsor meal for seniors, implement best practices for council on aging. Thank you.
I'm just gonna leave this here for informational, for people who might like it.
Great, yeah.
You can take them away if they're-
Well, we'll find a place in town hall to put them, I'm sure.
Good, thank you.
That's all right.
That's all right, have a good night. Support the needs of the town's senior population, sponsor meals for seniors, implement best practices for council on aging, elder and human services. 3D, establish townwide standards for hiring, including department transitions in fiscal year 2014. Anything, just open up to either one?
No, I don't have any.
I wonder about 3B, we have one of the best financially-run towns around, and part of that is the, is the procurement process. Do we really need to fool around with this? I'm not sure we do. I think, you know, right now, we have great bunch of professionals that steer us in the right direction on, on procurements, tell us what we need to know, tell us the kinds of things that are, we're involved in in the decision-making process, and give us really good advice. So I don't know that we should be spending a heck of a lot of time on that.
I agree.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't feel the need to micromanage that department. I think that we need to have, I, I just don't wanna see anything fall off the table and lose sight of anything. Is, I know Bonnie, you have anything?
No, I mean, we've, you know, we follow the policies that the board has already adopted, and we make sure that everything gets to you. I am looking to just provide some information to the departments this year as one of my goals, to streamline it for them as far as reviewing which law is applicable, but it, it happens anyway.
Yeah, so it seems like micromanaging.
Are you asking, well, you said you would follow the goals of the board, though.
And your, and your goals and policies are very clearly defined, what needs to come to you, what needs to go to key, how we inform you of, of the purchases.
There are already procurement policies that you adopted, we're following.
Okay, you feel that they need to ever be revisited? Cause if we, as if we say, okay, everything's great this year, but we, and we never revisit it, are we gonna run out of-
They would periodically, you know, you know, as the law changes or circumstances.
Periodically, as in a couple of years, not every 22-
Yeah, if something comes up, we're gonna be informed about it, and, and we have to modify the policy. I, I think we don't have anything to fix. It's not something, you know, that our policies aren't cast in stone. As the need arises, we usually buy a change in law, we have to- Yeah, I think about three years ago, we actually did a major revamp of the procurement policies, and in part to make sure that all of the boards and departments were on the same wavelength. So we doctored a formal policy here, which we then could have Bonnie, you know, enforce.
All right.
We agree to take that out?
Sure. So we have removed 3B and renumber as needed.
Okay, you ready?
I'm just looking at the establish townwide standards for hiring, including department transitions. I guess that's gonna have to be further defined somewhere down the line, because it's-
Well, right now, we have, that actually is one of the things on our radar screen, because we do have a number of different appointing authorities in town. It's not just the Selectmen or myself or Bonnie, that there are other department heads or boards and commissions, and we've talked about having a, a uniform. There are some best practices that we're using.
That other side.
But we, it would be better if we could codify what those are.
Okay.
Going back to 3B, a while back, I recall there was some talk amongst the board over supporting a buy-American policy, were they feasible?
For what?
Buy-American or were feasible?
Oh, buy-American.
Were they ever feasible? Did that just kind of fizzle out, or?
That was a discussion last year, I think, or the year before, I'm not sure.
Yeah, it sounds familiar.
I was one of the proponents of that.
Yeah, I wasn't gonna put no words in your mouth, I recall you brought it up.
Plenty of people do that, feel free.
So, any thoughts? I mean, I just, I just think, you know, you can go to, you can have the buy-American, and I, you know, I like the thought, I think there are some times where it's not relevant, and you really, I mean, if we're gonna buy American, it's the lowest price, I think, you know, I think we need to be fiscally responsible. We wanna be fiscally responsible and make sure we're paying the lowest price for everything.
Oh, agree, but I'm saying where there's, where you got a choice between buying something, I mean, in this country, you're buying something made in someplace, begins with C, ends with A, in California.
No, I think the whole buy-American concept has taken a lot of momentum, and you're seeing a lot of effort, a lot of companies to make sure they have a piece of the, you know, even Apple has, well, it was designed here in California.
Right.
Even though it was built over, you know, overseas. But I, I think, if I'm recalling discussions before, given equal factors, then, then buying American would be the, would be the choice.
I think, but as, I think there's a lot of things that we have to take the lowest bidder, and I think there's, you know, I think that's, that's fiscally responsible, you know, so.
Oh, agree, but I'm saying if it's-
I mean, that's what, that's what the law says, and the problem, and, and I do not wanna appear as being opposed to buying American because that, we, because that's something that we support. However, finding the products that meet that standard are, is not eas, is not easy. And there's nothing about the way that the town of Littleton does its business, which is different than anyone else, and if state and, you know, industry and federal government can't agree on what does it need to, how do you meet that standard of a buy-American program? And how do you get certified, and how do you stay certified, and it's just-
Yeah, I think it's, yeah, it's a great idea, I think it's just, yeah, I don't think it's-
I remember hearing it.
I mean, I think, I think if it did come down to that, if we're ever possible to get two bids precisely the same, I think everybody would understand, yeah, let's go-
Yeah, and that's all I was encouraging was-
Yeah, okay.
The state actually has, I'm involved in this with a FIR03 contract. They actually have preferences, not for buying American, but for small business and certain types of small businesses.
Yeah, right, right, oh, yeah, yeah.
And they actually get, you know, they actually get the first buyout of the apple.
Okay, so move that the Board of Selectmen vote to adopt Goal Number 3, Organizational for Fiscal Year 2014, as amended.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Fiscal management, does the board wish to continue and chug along tonight? Or do we wish to continue to another time?
I'd like to keep going.
Me too.
Okay.
My library trustees meeting's until 10:30, Tim, this is nothing.
10:30, yeah. I'll just make sure, let the men, the meetings reflect that, we all wanted to chug along. So fiscal management, amend Community Preservation Act, acceptance to deposit additional local funds in CPA, additional local funds in CVA fund, November 13. Special town meeting, May 14, annual town election. Senior Veterans Work Pack Off Program, tax relief, explore new funding sources, project mitigation funds, et cetera. Fiscal 2515, 2015 budget preparation, updating financial policies with Finance Committee Selectmen. Cost-benefit comparison for capital expenditures. Any board comments?
Yeah, I, I don't understand why we are talking about special town meeting and annual town election. I don't, is this procedural with the adoption?
That is the procedure for amending the Community Preservation Act, and it's-
So it should be amend, instead of amended, is that right?
Well, we're looking to accept, we're looking to accept the amended Community Preservation Act.
All right.
Okay.
So that we can deposit local funds in the CPA fund. It will take two acts, it will take a town meeting vote and an annual town election vote held at least 35 days after the town meeting. The only way the calendar works for that is a fall town meeting and the, and the May annual election.
All right, so before I just say, accepting amended Community Preservation Act.
Yeah, accept, yeah.
Accepted, yeah, okay. Okay. Alex, here?
I'm good.
Okay. Anything from the public? Oh, yeah. Didn't ask you?
No, he asked Alex.
No, cause you, cause you asked a question, oh, okay, then I thought you were gonna continue on?
No, okay. What about the cell phone funds? I understand from talking-
Cell tower funds, yeah.
Right, so I wrote phone, I meant tower. I had talked to Bonnie about this a little bit, and you explained that we could enhance the match on the CPA if we-
The cell tower funds is one of, it is a local fund which is a potential- The cell tower funds is one of, it is a local fund which is a potential source of local dollars that could be used to match the CPA fund. It's sort of, it's a two-step process. Number one is you have to accept the amended Community Preservation Act to allow local funds to be put in to do the match, to increase the base for your match. Step two is to actually take money from somewhere and then put it in the fund.
Okay.
And we, and, and we had an initial set of discussions about perhaps, in fact, the board's goal last year said, look at cell tower funds as that potential source. The water commissioners then said, timeout, we'd like to consider putting that money in, in their fund. And we haven't had the discussion yet about whether it would be those monies, or whether it might be something else. It could be the, we had our eye on the $200,000 annual savings for 10-year period from re-funding the school debt. That's another potential local funds that could be put in.
But this goal paves the road for that to be part of the calculation?
Yes, this, yes, and the, and it would be at the November 2014 special town meeting would be the earliest that we could actually vote to put money in the fund. So we'd have a year, a year and a half to figure out what funds it might be.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Okay. Public, can you go with the public?
Okay, so moved that the board of selectmen vote to adopt goal number four fiscal management for fiscal year 2014, as amended, or do we amend it?
Yeah, we just said, put in one word, accept.
Oh, yes, as amended.
All, all those in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Environmental. Let's see, 5A, preserve agricultural, agriculture. Magic agricultural project implementation, et cetera. Quantify goals for preservation of prime agricultural soils, funding opportunities for agricultural land, L A N D, grant application for church metals, trust for public land, conservation recreation properties, land exchange, Morgan property, et cetera, including acquisition of property for active recreation. 5D, Cooper Farm Preservation. 5E, update open space and recreation plan, which expires April 2014, include action plan for agricultural lands. 5F, solid waste disposal recycling. 5G, review existing regulations on tree removal to consider, to consider adopting local standards. 5H, explore adoption of local regulations on vehicle idling standards. And 5I, explore adoption of standards for commercial properties, including overnight lighting prohibition, adoption of green standards for new construction. I like exploring, that'll investigate. So. Gentlemen, anything?
Yeah, just, under 5F, we were specifically talking about taking a fresh look at single-stream recycling. This, to me, doesn't sound like a goal. It sounds like a, a category.
Okay.
So could we explore, take, you know, single-stream, or review, or, you know, some...
Explore, review work of, what was it? The solid waste, was it?
Here's your throw implementation committee.
Here's your, including exploring single-stream.
I think the goal, as we discussed at the last meeting, was to take a serious look at, whether it was feasible to go to single-stream recycling.
Well, we know it's feasible. I thought the goal was to determine if there was a, how much was it gonna cost, and there was, if there was town, if the town had a taste for it.
But that's part of the feasibility.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, we know it, we can do it, and I, I think we know that the public would like it. So we have to look and see if it's feasible.
There's one person in town I know that would like it.
That doesn't like it?
That does, that would prefer it, but I don't know if they, you know, but we have to look at the cost of that, you know, if that means your sticker goes up to, you know...
Don't throw it over, I got to be quoted on it later.
So I have explored, review the work of the page through implementation committee, including exploring feasibility of single-stream recycling and the public perception of single-stream recycling.
That's fine. Right? It's a lot of words.
Well, I think we had explored there a couple times, but...
Because we didn't have enough words, and now we have too many, so that's great. A comment on 5H. After talking with Sergeant Pernard of Littleton Police about vehicle idling, he mentioned that it'd be great if the board of selectmen supported the training of commercial vehicle citation. I guess there's a special training that a police officer would need to undertake? Chief Kelly, is that inaccurate? Okay. And he, Sergeant Pernard said that there could be, because we have so much commercial traffic, it might be a good idea to have someone or a few officers specifically trained on how to look at that and assess for violations of trucks and pollution, and so...
So...
I'm bringing, I'm bringing it up because it, it sort of came out of the vehicle idling idea.
Yeah, well, I was gonna say, in order to put that within the goal, we have to change 5H to do that.
Well, or we could leave 5H and add 5J, talking about the...
We can do it that way.
But I guess I don't know if it's, if we as, as a board can say to the chief of police, can you do that?
All right, go ahead, chief.
Over the last 15 years, we've looked at it numerous times. It is economically challenging to train the individuals and keep them up to date in their mandatory certifications, and the equipment that is needed in order to pull over a tractor-trailer and effectively expect it. The state police has a truck team that deals with that specifically. We have them in town occasionally. We also, if we run into a, a vehicle that we know to be in violation, we will call them in. But for a department our size, and departments large, much larger than us, it is not done...
Because of the cost prohibitive nature?
Because of the cost of training.
Be something at the state police level. It sounds like one of the few things that we actually, or one of a shortlist of things that we do regionally.
Well, the state police helps us out, we call them, but they also have a limited amount of bodies that's covered state.
Right, yeah, they will, they will be coming down here if they've only got a handful.
Right, and you also need to place the four vehicles over and conduct the inspection.
Okay, the head of the truck was in his access. There's some heavy activity on him.
Point the deputy chief just brings up, oftentimes, we get calls at night specifically for the sitco at the airline, the shell station at the depot, and other locations in town where trucks are parked and the driver's sleeping, and they leave the, the vehicle running. We're always chasing them out of various locations.
Would it be too much work to put together a one- or a two-page summary of, you know, what you just said with a few more details?
Sure.
So we can just make a goal, is request a summary of emissions officers' trainings and pros and cons?
Sure.
Something like that, and, and current practices?
Sure.
Maybe hopefully put it to bed one time, one more time?
Along with the guys that don't have the tractor-trailer.
So is that gonna be a 5J?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, I mean, if you're exploring, you've got, explore adoption of local regulations for vehicle, vehicle idling standards, including training and equipment requirements.
Yeah, no, I want to, I like a summary, because this could be the basis of the idling standard. If it says, hey, if it says, look, the chief, we, we already get calls, and we respond to them, we chase them off. If, you know, the state police already patrol it, you know, it's cost, you know, the cost benefit doesn't play out, then, you know, we have a place to start with that, so. So my goal to add 5J would be to request a summary of, what's the program, or what's the license of the training that they get?
Commercial vehicle enforcement?
Okay. Request summary of commercial vehicle enforcement, the pros and cons of the training and recertification, and also to request that the police chief provide a summary of current practices regarding emissions.
Some of this idling issue is, is over time self-correcting because of the new EPA regulations. Most of these trucks will shut off after five minutes.
Okay, my 5H was not just about commercial vehicles. Okay, so can we leave 5H intact?
Oh, yeah, 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 no, 5J, as you had.
More of a point on 5H, and I've also got a quick comment on 5G and 5L when we get, high when we get there. Chief, does the town even have the authority to set more vehicle operation standards at the local level?
That's a good question that town council would have to, to answer. As far as us becoming more restrictive than the statute, he would have to answer that.
You can't, you can't have a town bylaw that is, adopted by town meeting that is repugnant to law. And the standard for that is, is that our bylaws require the approval of the attorney general before they can take effect. And I don't have the answer right now.
Because like Alex points out, I believe there's already a state law that says you can't idle for more than five minutes. And, you know, if every town decided they're gonna find people based on whatever time they pick, that's chaos.
And that, that certainly isn't black and white either, that's fair.
And the other comment I have on 5G under review existing regulations on tree removal, would the board be willing to add on town land to clarify that?
I think we talked about that a little bit before.
I always talked about, but, you know, having it written down, that way there's...
Yeah. Which number? 5G?
And when we get to 5I...
Go ahead, we're there.
Adoption of green standards for new construction. I believe in the village zoning, the use of the lead standards, if you will, is encouraged. But that's what you gotta be really careful of. If you start saying, we're gonna adopt our own green building code, you could very easily get to the point you'll never have another commercial...
You can't do, that, the stretch code is about to become this, which right now is optional. In the communities that have adopted the Green Communities Act, which we have not, that adopting the stretch code locally is one of the ways that you do that. However, the, the stretch code is about to become de-code in, in the next year or two.
Statewide.
Statewide, yeah. So therefore, will take effect in, in Littleton, even though we haven't adopted.
But this is just to look at it, too.
And just with 5G, as I mentioned previously, which I think is worth including, once again, we have a tree committee which has very experienced landscape architect, landscape designer, and they don't get consulted often, and they probably should be. So you're reviewing existing regulations, blah, blah, blah. I would think also including the tree committee in, as advisors would be helpful.
That can be done.
You might avoid some of the problems you had on Goldsmith.
Wasn't it true in Goldsmith a lot, or it may probably be a rough shape?
It may well be, but I think last time Jim Clyde referred to it as a disaster.
Okay. I have any else?
Remove that...
Hold on. With respect to the, the adoption of green standards for new construction, have we altered that?
No, I have it now.
There was also a mention during the goal-setting exercise about purchasing fuel-efficient vehicles when we have procurements, if, if possible. That was something that was mentioned in this room. Also, there was a mention that we stop buying these water things because we have perfectly lovely water in town. And that could actually save the taxpayers some money, not having to buy water for all of our public buildings. So I don't know if adoption of green standards for vehicle procurement and, I don't know what to call that, extra unnecessary goofiness, maybe. I mean, I don't know what to call that. But what, I mean, we, we don't need water in this room. We have water in that room. Comes out of the tap, it's clean.
Okay, well, Tricia was...
But is that really a goal, or something that we adopt under considering our green standards?
Okay, so can we say adoption of green standards, period?
Yeah, we can, as a general. Green, I would say, 5K, explore adoption, adopting green standards for vehicle procurement?
There's a lot to that. We have to, we can't necessarily we're gonna do that.
No, 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 we, we can't say we're exploring it, though, right? We can't say we're exploring it?
Yeah, we've been, we've been here before, but, you know, things might have changed, so we can look at it, but there's a lot to it.
And then, do you want, do you want to add a 5L regarding water specifically, or?
That's pretty, that's pretty big, in my opinion. I mean, it's...
Yeah, I think that's more like micromanagement than it is looking at a dental green philosophy. Because that will come up as part of the discussion. If we wanna conserve and do the right things and save money, then that needs to be on the table every single year.
Would that tie in with things like purchase of biodiesel for the town trucks, for example?
You know, the water's really just a drop in the bucket, too.
Do we have...
Go for it.
That's it, absolutely.
I mean, do we have, we don't have some sort of something like this in town, do we? We don't have a committee that would assess, you know what, maybe we don't need those water bubbler things because we actually have water in Littleton that's clean and drinkable.
We don't have a green committee, a sustainability committee.
All right, absolutely. All right. Explore adopting a green committee for...
How about we just appoint a green committee?
Establish.
Establish and appoint.
The steward committee, do you have?
No, that steward committee's actually green.
They're brown, Marty.
Oh, God.
Establish adopting a, no, establish a, a green committee to...
To explore better ways to do the town's...
Greener ways.
Sometimes you...
Greener ways to...
Yeah, I, I think you're... Yeah, we should have a sustainability committee.
All right, establish a sustainability committee, all right.
A gentleman in the back of the room probably recalled, we've been here before with the removal of the, of the water, and if I bid it came back. It went away one year, and that came back a little bit of time.
All right, so we got just 5J and K added in. So we got 5A through K.
Wasn't there L for the sustainability committee? Is that a whole separate that you write in on at the end there?
Double, double K.
I had 5K.
Oh, fine.
Establish a sustainability committee.
Okay, perfect.
Okay.
Okay. Moved that the board of selectmen adopt goal five environmental for fiscal year 2014?
Seconded. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're almost done.
Regulatory issues. 6A, review status of proposed sign bylaw amendment with planning board. Review development, 6B is review development of quarry closure plan. 6C, affordable housing. Preserve affordable housing units to maintain 10% goal. Implement magic regional, regional housing services office. Explore production of affordable units on tax title properties. And rather than just senior housing, I wanna say something about, what are you gonna say? Was it maintain, it's...
Affordable housing for seniors. One of the things that, that I don't see here that was definitely part of the discussion was the discussion about, you know, the, the small lots being developed in the, and I interjected into that discussion, well, then maybe there should be, if it's a small lot, then it should be an affordable lot. And that would address, that could address several issues. But I think there's no question that part of what's happening is that smaller lots are being built on. And, you know, Jim brought this up as a concern. I certainly share it as a concern, is that the net result of that occurring is a change in the community that may or may not be consistent with what the town people wanted, and that speaks to succeed the master plan. So I would like to see us get that wording back in there. However, we, I'm not quite sure how that discussion ended at the, at the preliminary goal-setting. But link the, deal with the small lots issue and link it to affordable, and even senior affordable.
What is a small lots issue? That small lots are being developed?
Smaller lots are being developed on that had not been developed on for a long time.
All right, I guess, well, I think that, that, that can be a component. I just don't wanna start saying small, because then we have to, do we have to define small? I think if we can say, you know, keep the 6A, affordable housing, and you can say, including... I think if we can say, you know, keep the six A of 40 housing, and you can say including establishing program for, or including program for small lots to be affordable.
We would be able to define what those small lots are.
Yeah.
But I think as a board, we should be upfront on this issue and take, and understand that this is a change in what's happening. And make sure that we address it in the way that the community wants for their, for what their community should look like.
But given yourself as, or let's look at those, those owners of those lots. If we're going to tell them what they can, they're going to tell it has to be used, are we able to tell them what it has to, what it can be used for? And if they can use it for, if they're going to get a price for an affordable, as an affordable building, and they're going to get a better price for a non-affordable building, who are we to say they have to choose one or the other?
Well, the town threw a number of bylaws and the business of telling people what they can and cannot do. They have zoning, they have required, you know, health board regulations. And this is brought upon in part by the, the change in the health regulations. The, a lot, and we talked about this before, what's the, what's the unintended consequence of what happened? This is one of the unintended consequences, I think, is that, okay, so we modify health regulations for whatever reason, good cause, all, all that stuff, and the consequence is now we're going to have a number of smaller lots built, built on that were, in essence, prohibited from being built on previously. So is that where we want to go as a community? Is that what we want to have happen? And if, and, and do we want to address that issue?
Well, outside of zoning, I don't want to tell people what they can and can't do. I mean, zoning is, I mean, you're telling, you, you use that as an example, we're telling what people can and can't do. I think if you buy in a zone, you know what you can and can't do is different than saying, no, you, because your lot doesn't meet this new, or is considered a small lot, you now have to do it this way. I think that's different than zoning and, and regulations out of there to, to protect public health and environment.
Certainly, we have to look at that, but, but it is, we're not stepping in any place that this town and every other town hasn't been before by looking at this issue. Whether it's done by board of health regulation, by zoning by law or whatever, this, this is part of how a town plans for what the town is going to look like and what they want the town to be. So that's all I'm saying is we get out in front of this. And I'm not talking about saying, you know, you can't do something with your land. We have hundreds of laws on the book that tell people, you know, if I wanted to raise 150 pigs on my land, because I could make more money doing that, I can't just do that. And so I don't, I don't think the argument about whether we're restricting people from what they can do with their land is really what we should be focusing on. It's looking at what do we want this community to be? And is this unintended consequences affecting that?
Then we have to word, then you have to word something, then, do you want to come up with some sort of wording for your small lots, affordable housing, something like that?
I think not for the purpose of a goal, and we have to be specific. We have to look at the issue.
Okay.
And the consequences of the issue and how we might want to address it. And we can't just do this ourselves. Of course, the planning board and the board of health have to be involved in that.
All right, so. Well, explore production of affordable units on tax titled properties and on small lots, small, small lot properties, small area properties. Explore, because that's basically what you want to do, explore production of affordable units on tax titled properties and on small properties.
Or we can, we can call out the small property or small lots, these is a separate thing. Well, if you, if we've got, but we've got one goal on affordable housing.
Yeah.
So if the purpose of the small lots is to look at affordable housing, then you put it here, if it's to come up with a policy on small lots that doesn't retain, necessarily retain affordable housing, you have to do a separate one.
Because I can see there being some things, you're making it, somehow making it more, you know, if you have a small lot, you can make it more financially advantageous for them to develop.
But it's certainly more palatable and achieves a public purpose if you're saying, all right, well, if the small lot's going to be developed, that, that we'll, we'll begrudgingly go along with that, just so long as it's a use that we want to support like affordable housing.
Yeah, yeah. So, okay. Jerry?
In terms of small lots, we don't have a choice. The only thing that has limited the small lots that have been grandfathered in because they were developed long before zoning, or carved out as long before zoning, has been septic. With innovative designs, that goes away. And perhaps this goal should morph into, what can we do to prevent the building of the so-called McMansions or overdevelopment of these lots? A good example is right where Hartwell Ave takes that sharp bend heading out towards 110. You take a look out there, and there was an ancient house, it was torn down, it was rebuilt. And I would guess just by looking at it, that that thing fits by the hair of its chinny, chinny, chin, every single setback. It's the biggest house you could jam on the lot. And with these lots that are grandfathered in, or how, we don't have a say in that. A developer, if they can get a septic on it, and it meets the grandfathering requirements, they can put the biggest McMansion on it that'll fit.
And what's wrong with that?
You start ending up with, is that what you want? Do you really want to go into a neighborhood of 5,000 or 10,000 square foot lots with two and a half story buildings, just each one shading the next? One option might be a reduced height standard requirement that the board, the planning board could adopt. Anything under, let's say, 20,000 square feet, the height is reduced by X number of feet per thousand square feet under. And if you want to say if the property's going to be made affordable, you provide an incentive like that requirement is waived. But otherwise, you're going to run the risk of you go into the long lake area and you're going to end up with just McMansion after McMansion after McMansion, jammed on these tiny lots, and it's going to look like downtown Waltham.
Well, let's not, let's, this, I, I, you made a good point about, you know, if we can, we can encourage this by, you know, the method that you said, okay, you know, we'll look the other way, or we'll, you will grant your variance to this if you make it affordable, things like that. I disagree with your thinking that's going to look like downtown Waltham because you still have setbacks, you still have septic to fit in, things like that. Also, you know, and, you know, the, the other maybe intended consequence is, you know, with these development of McMansions in the, in the lake area, so you have a two bedroom, you know, thousand square foot house, and now you put up, because the, you know, they are grandfathered, they can only put up, you know, they can only put up a two bedroom house. So now they put up a, you know, 3,000 square foot house, and your tax rolls go up, but your impacts on the schools don't increase.
That's all driven by how big a septic you can.
Right, right.
And the fact of the matter, with these more innovative systems, you put, what is it, a micro fast, for example, you can push more septicage through for a given area.
But you still can't, by the way, we can, we, I can give you the background, that's what I do for a living, but you can't, you still can't increase the, the number of bedroom sort of system, but I guess, what's that?
I said, why not?
Yeah, I'll, I'll explain to you, so I'm not going to go into the details now, we'll talk about it sometime. But what I'm saying is if you, why not? I mean, if you're, you're talking about McMansions as a, and downtown Waltham as a negative, but I'm thinking, you know, two bedroom house worth, you know, 200,000? Two bedroom house worth 400, worth 400,000, you know? So I mean, there's two sides to every story is what I'm trying to make.
But, but what we ought to be considering is, you know, if we're going to be out in front of this issue, is what do the townspeople want this town to be? I mean, we know they want to preserve agricultural land and other things. So, so here's the consequence, is this what they want? And if it's not what they want, then we need to do something to fix that.
All right, so we want to investigate options for turning small lots into affordable housing.
Oh, I.
I know what you do, John, I know you do, does that, that sound like a reasonable wording?
I, I think that's where the discussion began, but I think it's now morphed into this idea of the small lots are, are being developed in a way that perhaps was an unintended consequence by changes in board of health regulations and zoning regulations, that perhaps the vision of our community, those unintended consequences were, as defined, unintended. And perhaps, as Alex is saying, to get in front of it, one of our goals should be to sort of now look at the unintended consequences and consider changing things back to the way they had been.
Okay.
Or changing setbacks.
All right, this is fine, give me wording. I, I was trying to talk about wording.
And it dovetails into the, to the goal of the master plan, because the master plan one created was created around the vision that had the previous set of regulations that were much more restrictive.
That's fine, give me wording. But I also want to say that the redevelopment of a lot is not an unintended consequence of the board health. A redevelopment and because of some sort of innovative system is, you could have done that at any time. You know, as soon as the innovative system goes on, you can build a lot, you can still, you can still put the system in. That, tearing down a house and putting up a bigger house had nothing to do with the board of health regulations change. The unintended consequences, I think, goes back to Alex's original point, which was the small lots that now can get developed. So, I'm sorry, I just had to go off the tracks and do that clarification. We'll take hold when you have, when you have wording on it. I gotta get a sip of water, sorry.
Okay, I'll wait for you.
I appreciate that, appreciate that. What's that?
Some water.
Whatever that is.
Take imported water.
There is water in the back. Water from Maine. Massachusetts water's delicious.
Don't like Littleton water?
Yeah, what's wrong with you? You don't like Littleton water?
That's cold. Foss is not cold.
You run it long enough.
Yeah, but that's wasted water, how much water do you waste? There you go.
So, I, I was hoping to influence that.
I was hoping to get the wording before you commented.
Okay, so is this a whole nother goal, six G, to explore the recent history of the development of small lots and it's, they, and, and it's, I don't know.
No, I had the possibility of using them for affordable housing. Because that's where we're at, right?
No, that's separate. I think what we've done is we've separated, that the small lots, they're separate, but they're connected in that one idea was to use small lots and provide incentive with for affordable housing.
And that's where she has that, oh, that's the other one, okay.
But, but the other issue is the existence of the new way of doing things, development of, on the small lots. And what are the consequences of that and where, where do we want to be with it in actuality? So, so I would just say some, examine the issue of, or examine the issue of.
Issue and impact?
Of development on small, small lots.
That's fine. I, I would explore the recent buildup of small lots in the wake of zoning and board of health regulations and there, and those consequences. And I don't know, that means also to consider changing back to the way things had been a minute.
Asking the board to change, board of health to change the way things were, because it's not our periphery.
I imagine.
Planning board.
But we're saying that this development of small lots is because of board health, that's what the implication is here. And by the way, it's not small lots, it's slow perking lots, which happen to be, some of them have to be small lots, but it really pertains to.
Well, yeah, it's, 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 one of the big factors was the perk rate.
Yeah.
And, and the lots, most of, the coincidence is many of those are small lots, paper lots that now become lots in actuality.
Yeah.
Because of the reduction in, in the requirement.
Or, yeah.
So explore the recent buildup of slow perking and small lots?
Sure.
And, and what?
Then we had the, the other one, the other half of it was to explore the ability to use these small, small perking lots as affordable housing. Right? Those, those are two parts.
Yes.
Yes.
I think that accomplishes.
Did you get that key?
No.
All right, so explore the recent buildup of slow perking and/or small lots and explore using these in the affordable housing calculation?
Somehow encouraging affordable housing development of these lots.
Okay.
Something like that.
The encouragement of.
Did you get that?
We, you'll all get to review the draft.
Right, okay.
Okay.
All right, so that gives us five J and K?
No, six. Way past five.
Six, six.
Trying to make a comment on this?
I see your hand up, Don, don't worry, I can't forget about you, you are unforgettable.
Well, you don't seem to want to listen before you do your deliberations and make your decision making. What's the purpose of a public hearing?
Do you want to comment on something or do you want to comment on nothing? What I'm trying to do is get something for you to comment on, and I don't appreciate your belligerent attitude towards me. What we're trying to do is conduct an orderly meeting. We're sitting here working to try and create two new goals, and then you'll have the option to, to go on those goals. I'm trying to, I'm, I'm trying to keep order and do it in an efficient manner. We have our two goals.
Correct.
Six G and six A. Would you like, all right, would you like those goals re-read or are you ready to comment?
I want to comment on why it's a bad idea to have affordable housing on small lots.
No, I don't want that, because that's, we're going to investigate that. That's part of the goal. Doing, we will investigate that. I, we, we're here to talk tonight about the goals and what you're, what we're going to do about the goals, whether or not, not the outcome of the goals, we want to talk about the goals, so go ahead.
I'm talking about the goals and you're talking about the foundation of putting the goals together. And what I'm going to say is that I think it may make sense at the end point of having affordable housing in small lots and having affordable and all that, but starting off getting marginal small lots as is the case of Smedback lots is a bad idea. Usually it's bad drainage, it's, they're, they're problematic. If you're trying to drive affordable housing, that makes sense. In fact, that was, was pushing way back when, before 15 Great Road. If you want to organize it, you can conduct it so it works out the way you want to, and affordable housing can be on small lots, and you should probably drive the process, the community to drive the process. But to just try to pick small lots that are marginal, have problems, say, oh, okay, affordable housing actually makes it much better, much worse for the clients on these lots that usually have bad drainage, they're not very workable. I mean, I, I agree with the concept, it's nice to wind up with something that's affordable, that's workable, but starting off with a mixture of the small lots like on the lake area is not a good idea. And that's the typical problem a lot of people do in development. So I was hoping to influence that before you nail down your exact wording.
Isn't that remedied by what we just created in examining the small lot issue?
I thought exactly what, I was thinking exactly that while he was going on, while I was listening.
I mean, what we've done by establishing that goal is establish a dialogue about the impact of the small marginal lots.
It, what I think might be more workable is dealing with affordable housing and maybe the end result when people, I mean, I, I, I feel with developers trying to do limited development, not impact a huge area. And they actually come up with some very good things in small areas, in fact, working with one now. But I think to go out to find some marginal lot that is, in most cases, isolated, not very well arranged, had bad range, is not workable. You give an incentive for affordable housing, it's, it, it exasperates the situation.
So how about if we separate the two issues?
We did, they're separated, but here's.
So in other words, don't, we want to investigate affordable housing, but we don't necessarily have to tie that to small lots.
No, but we already have, we already have affordable housing in some, in there, and this is, I think the way this all started, it was that if these lots are going to be developed, let's try to get them affordable.
Yes.
It's not encouraging, it's not encouraging any, right, and that's what we've, I think that's what we've captured here. I don't think we're telling people to go, we're not reducing the standards, we're not saying, hey, go develop this lot. We're trying to say, look, if it's going to be developed, let's try to get it in affordable.
Okay.
And I, and I think that's what we accomplished. And I think we accomplished that. Okay. John Kelly?
Hey, John.
Jerry?
Maybe the thing to look at, first of all, why would a developer want to go out and spend all the time and effort to build a house on a small lot that they've gone out and spent additional money to buy and then be restricted in what they can sell?
We're going to investigate finding some sort of incentive for them to do that.
Another option might be with town parcels, maybe work together charitable organizations like Habitat and get them to take on the building if the town donates or otherwise provides the land. I know a number of years ago Habitat built a house, was it Harvard Road?
Donate it by my mother.
Always wanted it.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
That was, in 2000, it was a long time ago.
But the land was fairly good.
What point does that now? What point does that matter?
Because most of the small lots are.
All right. Do we have a motion on six?
Sure. Move that the board select and adopt regulatory issues, goal number six, fiscal year 2014.
Before I second it, and it occurred to me that we have not specifically addressed. Before our second, it occurred to me that we have not specifically addressed senior housing.
I had an amendment that maybe got lost in the thing here. It said for 6C, instead of just saying senior housing, it said increase affordable housing options for seniors. Instead of just saying senior housing. And that was under 6C. And that may have been missed.
Yeah, that added, oh god.
Yeah, you got it, yeah.
My computer crashed. I didn't get whatever 6G and 6H.
That's fine.
Okay, second. Okay. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Information and communication. 7A, communicate with town boards, encourage inter-board representation. Voter information include inter-board communication. 7C, improve public relations, communications, explore use of social media technology, et cetera.
How much are you pretty generous, Eric?
Yeah, 7B, yeah. 7B, can we...
I was, yeah, as far as the voter information, I had suggested that everything that be put in front of the voters by way of warrant or ballot question be put in plain language text. I was told that the voter participation committee, in fact, is moving towards that anyhow.
We've already, we implemented it once, refined it for the last town meeting and we'll be refining it again. But the only problem we had was some of the articles are so technical, how do you create it into plain language?
Well, we're not allowed... They leave statutory texts.
Yeah, well, yeah, we're not allowed to not have the articles themselves be in legalese because they're accomplishing a particular purpose, but the goal has been to have accompanying text that's in plain English, which we've been doing.
So, do we want to just say 7B is continue to support the use of the...
I mean, it's a work in progress, so.
Well, that's what I'm saying, continue to support the work of the voter, the voter participation committee?
Yes.
That's fine.
7B. Anything else? Anything for the public on that?
In the general, I already, sometimes it's hard telling me to finish with everything or you're halfway through and you're ignoring what, Empire? Is this seven in general?
Yes.
Okay. There are three things that could be needed. Often there's requests for having public meetings broadcast. That should be a high priority. The excuse that always gets thrown out is there isn't personnel to broadcast it. A lot of money has gone into the studios. If we need more money, get more money, but it's one of the best ways of having the public evolve and also making sure the meetings are actually our focus because some of the meetings that are broadcast go in all sorts of strange places. So I think a high priority of local...
I know, yeah. I'm fighting. Hey, go ahead. As much as I fight it, they continue to go in strange places.
I admit, there are things I don't want to mention to the public, but there are real issues with some of the small meetings. So I think we need more public meetings broadcast. It involves the public. As you saw earlier, Megan came when she saw something being discussed before. There is an audience of whom that watches this. So I was surprised that wasn't listed at all. I think that's a goal that's needed. Especially since we've got all this money from the local broadcast cable companies to promote what we're doing. I think this is one of the areas we should probably do more in. So that's one concern.
We probably should put something like that in there because it's been in our goals year after year after year to make improvements in the coverage and, you know, we've gone a long way recently because now you can just go online, pull up a meeting and look at it. But we're not done.
Believe me, we can do that.
I think it helps us all.
All right, so, so I'm just going to continue on with it. I know you were rolling there, but I think it should be in the form of like encourage, something like that.
I think it's expand, expand public broadcasting of...
Yeah, I think we should leave it up to the boards still though. I don't think like we should be telling duly elected boards that they, and we can't tell them, but so I was encouraged boards and committees to...
We told the planning board.
And the planning board needs it.
Flip the switch.
You have the point boards.
Encourage boards and committees to...
To use from 103?
To...
Flip the switch?
And place stations.
To...
Continue to improve coverage of public meetings.
And you should encourage 307 to be set up.
Yeah, it's on that, on all those for...
Tell, all right, go ahead, Don.
Another thing that I know has been mentioned before, I think in terms of debate, and has done in other towns, is that individuals who can subscribe by getting alerts when meetings are going to be held, you get agendas, rather than having people chase after them and hope that someone does post an electronic calendar. Like, don't they have to race down here to C and the paper board? It's easy to do. There are different ways to do it. I get all sorts of things from Westford in their meetings. I wonder why I can't do that in Littleton. And if for some reason someone has a hard time with the software locally, you can certainly use Google Groups or Yahoo Groups to do that and it can be self-maintained, but the meetings have to be put out on there. That involves the public.
You mean a list served with public meetings, agendas posted?
You can set up the, and so people don't send emails back to a larger group. You can make it a limited group that people can subscribe to.
A one-way mirror is what you're saying. A one-way mirror, basically.
Right, and but you can also do it with other software. I know Nancy has looked at two different ways to do it. That involves the public a lot more. It helps us all. My final thing is, we are probably the only town I can think of that doesn't have a GIS system. I know there are complications there, but we need to have geographic information system so you can see what's going on. That helps the planning, gives you visibility. You don't get else ones. And whatever the mechanism is...
It's online right now.
Just?
Yeah.
Property lines, as I understand it, it's...
It got launched two weeks ago.
And has it been figured out with all the assessment lines correctly?
Well, you can't, the assessment maps are not, they're approximate.
The assessors' maps have been digitized and they are on the GIS system that was just launched.
Well, they're on Mass GIS too.
Well, Mass GIS...
No, Mass GIS has the, has the...
But they're the lot lines?
No. They don't have assessors' lot lines. We had to add them ourselves, but we have added them.
So we have a GIS system.
Two weeks.
Okay, and some towns such as, for example, Concord, a lot of other towns will have the chaos where you can actually generate maps and add layers to it.
You do that online? I can...
Beyond Mass GIS?
No, I'm at the town's website.
Yeah. And it's accurate?
I'll send you the link. Hey?
Okay.
Close enough for government work.
Do you have Don's email?
Well, yeah, because I saw something earlier. You should make it public if it isn't on the website.
No, no, it is on the website.
We should announce it to let people know.
It's on the, it's on every webpage on the left-hand column and it's like right near the top and it says geographic information.
Okay.
There's the need for a long time.
7F, accomplished. All right.
Put a check mark.
Okay.
Well, that's good.
So look how fast we receive, look how fast we respond to your questions, your concerns. What else?
So I asked for that, I got here six and a half years ago. I asked for where's the GIS system and we have it now.
Okay, so we have 7D, which was...
Next, we're working on zoning map, which is now possible from the GIS system and the assessors' law.
Yeah, I gather it's going back to past records.
That's in progress, that's in progress, a digitized zoning map.
So 7D, we have encourage board, it has to do with encouraging boards to televise their meetings. And then we have 7E, which is investigate and adopt some sort of subscription service for updates for website and meetings and things like that. Okay.
And we're actually exploring that, the website upgrade.
Good. Move that the board is selected to adopt goals. Seven, information and communications for fiscal year 2014 as amended and edited.
Alex?
Second.
All those in favor?
I'm trying to remember all the one we did because it started as such a simple little one.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, town boards. Eight. Eight A, support the Littleton 300 celebration in 2014. Eight B, update code of ethics, review standards for appointment, for obtaining training on conflict of interest law. Eight C, volunteer appreciation program including recognition of law and community service. Eight D, develop a meeting law training. Eight E, consider establishment of term limits for elected and appointed boards, investigate legal framework. And eight F, task the cultural council with taking inventory of arts and cultural, arts and culture committee.
On eight B, code of conduct and ethics, I think when it says appointment for obtained training, it's really, it's a separate thing. Obtained, the obtained training on the conflict of interest law was one that was in my original list. So I think that's a separate piece of it.
Starting where? Starting where? Review standards or just obtained training?
No, no, I'm all for reviewing the standards, reviewing the standards for appointment.
Okay.
But obtained training on conflict of interest law, I think this board has to engage some more robust training efforts in this way.
Eight G.
And open meeting laws covered somewhere is down in name D. So those are the two areas. You can actually roll those two into one.
All right, so so are we saying do it? Are we saying look at? Are we saying get pricing on? Are we saying finding options? Find options for open meeting law training, consider...
Can we just schedule it? Can we just schedule an open meeting law training and schedule conflict of interest law training?
Yeah, by whom and...
We can work that out, yeah. There's only free training.
That's free.
Okay. And it's beyond what we already did?
It's probably the same thing, again.
Okay.
I mean, we've had the AG here, we've had, you know, the secretary of state's office and they come and they routinely, they'll come back and do training and you just have to open up their training to other surrounding communities.
What's the other one? What about, there's others though, too. Are there any others that we should add on there? Or is that all we need?
I think those are, if you have one that's obtained training on conflict of interest law and open meeting law, I think you've hit...
Ethics, is it ethics?
That's that conflict of interest.
That's the same, okay.
It's done by the ethics commission.
It's the same stuff? Okay. All right.
So eight B and eight D merging into one?
No, eight B is changing to update a code of ethics and review standards for appointment. And then obtained training on conflict of interest law gets added into eight D.
Fine.
Anything else for the public?
Just a comment, eight B, I know one of the barriers of updating the code of conduct and ethics you should be aware of, so maybe it's how you do it, is that on elected boards, they feel they're independent and they're not appointed by you, so it should be agreeable to both elected and appointed. That probably means evolving them.
Yeah, of course, inviting them to that. Another...
That hasn't happened.
Well, the first pass through this, there was a lot of time that went by.
Right.
And there was a lot of attempts at involvement. Creating and updating a code of conduct is not a ten-minute operation. It's a pretty complex thing.
Why'd you make it?
I think it's great.
Yeah, because we only have 10 minutes left.
Training's 10 minutes long.
Another thing that was mentioned during the exercise was a committee to form a residence or voter's bill of rights. That was something that was suggested, which might also dovetail into this idea of ethics and letting people know that they have their own set of rights when they come before a board or, and, you know, just like hospitals hang up their patients' bill of rights. I think we could look to developing, or having a committee gathered together and come up with some ideas for that, that the voters could vote on.
I don't think it belongs in the same category as ethics. I think it's a little different.
No, I think she was saying, I think she was talking about AG. She was talking, it belongs on eight somewhere.
AG, yeah.
Yeah, AG, yeah.
No, I was suggesting that this...
I mean, I guess, I just don't, yeah, I don't, I don't know what would be in it, so that's not a reason to be against it. So, you know, I think we'd have to come up with a task for that committee, so.
Well, they could just, they could explore, right? See if there are other towns that have this sort of thing or...
Yeah, I mean, the biggest thing is to, you know, if we're getting open meeting law training, we ought to get open meeting law training for all the people who attend this too sometimes, you know? So...
So can we add as AG, explore a, explore pointing a committee to look into a voter's residence bill of rights?
Yeah, or I would even say develop, develop a task and possibly a committee for bill of rights. Because we want to come up with something for them to do and then get the task.
Well, it could be as simple as look into the development of a voter's bill of rights. Resident bill of rights, whichever way you want to put it. Explore establishment of a voter's bill of rights.
I heard that.
That's good to me. All right, eight A through G. Anything from the, is there anything else for the public? All right.
All right, move that the board is selected to adopt eight, town boards as a goal for fiscal year 2014 as edited and amended.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, community involvement. Nine A, cleanup program for depot, townwide. Nine B, wellness program, establish. Nine C, third Thursday celebrations. Okay, anyway? I like nine B. I just don't, you know, I don't know if we can get more success by just defining that better. You know, somehow establish, encourage activities and, you know, whether it's a wellness program, I don't know. Maybe that's what a wellness program is. I don't know.
Establish a wellness program for the community for...
Yeah, to encourage activity by the community. I think that's where you were.
Yeah, that was the idea, yeah.
For example, Wacomaral Dave, was it?
That was the example.
Okay, all right. Oh, yeah, sorry.
Nine A, cleanup, it's hard telling what you mean by cleanup because I think there are two, two ways you can interpret that. Is that to beautify, make something look more attractive, which is probably there done by business organizations that, you know, sort of do it themselves, or is it like to actually townwide cleanup, which is done in most other towns around where it's get someone, it sort of drives the process, you get youth groups, other groups involved and town departments to help out. Two different things, so what do you mean by cleanup?
I was thinking of the latter.
Yeah, and that would be nice, but I started questioning when the depot was mentioned, whether someone mentioned...
I think these two morph together. Joe Knox had talked about how the depot has been beautified and the gatekeepers booth there has been improved upon. I think that that was done with, you know, with David Erickson and trying to make some space down there, that there's an island as well. Yeah, exactly. But that also tied into, you know, there's a comma, townwide.
Yeah, it's sort of, sort of two different things, but that's fine.
Correct.
So if we were nine A, establish a annual townwide cleanup program.
How about twice a year? Spring and fall?
Yeah, yeah, I'm just thinking how much you're going to get.
Establish a semi-year.
There you go. Semi-wide cleanup program to clean up areas such as the depot.
No, no, they're cleaning up the town.
Okay, okay. All right. And then that's nine D?
Yes, separate.
All right. Nine, cleanup for the depot behind A, okay.
You want a separate cleanup for the depot?
Yeah, semi.
Clean up the whole town except for the depot. And the first one is... All right, we're good. You don't want to put them together?
Yeah.
All right, so move that the board, oh, sorry.
Oh, good.
Community involvement, getting on the subject of cleanup, maybe tie in more awareness and community action on invasives. I know that's where Finley's been pushed, but I guess sometimes...
So while we're cleaning up trash, we're pulling garlic mustard? That's fine. I'm sure we can include that as part of it.
I'll tell you, I don't know why someone's not taking on cleaning up invasives because...
Well, who should be doing that?
I don't know. State, town, county? I don't know. Because they're invasive.
Here's our opportunity.
Okay.
Does the town have a chamber of commerce and is that something the selectmen might want to encourage?
Do you ring your team up?
Oh, Rotary? What's chamber of commerce?
No, we don't.
What's chamber of commerce? What's Chamber of Commerce? Do I know?
There's a regional one, but there's not one, just in this town.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
It is the Metro West Business Chamber, which includes Acton and Littleton and maybe one other community.
Well, then maybe we do an annual townwide cleanup and an annual townwide invasive removal. Don't laugh, you were the one who just said you don't know why anyone's doing anything. We've got 9,000 people here.
Because it's A, people aren't aware, and B, it's a pain in the neck. I mean, I've been doing battle with garlic mustard for about five years.
I don't know if it's garlic mustard, I'm battling with something out there. Couple of different things. Come on down, tell me if it's garlic mustard and bring your clippers. All right, do we have nine? All right, nine established?
I don't know, are we doing something about the invasive plants which you brought up? It's getting late and people are getting deliriously strange, so.
No, no, nothing invasive.
No plants, no. Okay, hold on, we have a hand up.
That way.
I came more for the zoning change issue, but I also wanted to come to thank Joe Knox and all the neighbors in the depot area, as well as the ladies by the club who helped clean up that small parcel of land, which, plus mine, I don't own it, but that triangle, there was a tremendous amount of work and a lot of people worked really hard and really hot staff.
And your name and property?
And I'm David Erickson, I own the.
Okay. Okay.
Just comment, I know it's.
Sorry, I'm losing my voice, I haven't drank enough of that water.
Water bed there? Don't lose your voice.
But just, just a quick question, I know you've gone over it, but it may help you for clarity. On six F, you talk about rezoning the depot between Taylor and Harwood as business, do you really mean you want to rezone all those residential homes that Harwood have, or do you mean the railroad track to Taylor?
There was a specific, there was a specific lot there.
Strip.
Yeah.
Right, that goes both sides.
Which is zone industrial where Sandbell used to offload things.
Is that in the group that we're working out?
Yeah.
The zoning change?
No, not right, well, it's six F.
Now, Harwood app has residential homes on, do you really want that rezoned?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well.
I think you have the railroad tracks.
Yeah, no, what happened is, you're right, we did get, like, before I got through them, we got sidetracked, so I didn't read four of them, three of them that were adopted. But, yeah, rezone that land was, you know, as business was adopted.
Because it had been industrial?
I mean, to do it as a goal, to rezone that area as business was developed as a goal.
And that's in the group that we're discussing that?
No, no, it was in six.
It was in a former group.
Sorry.
I never heard it read.
I know, I just said, I just got, I got, we got distracted at a point before I got to it. I was reading six C and we got off on a tangent at that point before I got to read through them. Let's finish nine and we'll circle back.
All right, so we're done with nine?
Yes.
All right, so move that the board of selectmen adopt goal number nine, community involvement in fiscal year 2014 as edited and amended.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, let's go back to six D, E, and F, that were actually already voted on, but if we, so we can, if so needed, we can change. So six D was host community agreements, implementing the HCA's for Reed Meadows and 15 Great Road, develop policy for HCA's, consider requiring approval by town meeting, update master plan, and six F, rezone depot land between Taylor and Harwood as business.
So those last three weren't read when you were saying.
You're correct, you're correct.
You were written in by the state.
Right, but they were vote, but they were included as part of the vote, but they just weren't.
I didn't have, see, I didn't have my sheet with me, so I wasn't able to follow along. I thought that was part of the depot cleanup.
Oh, okay, all right. So do you have anything, any thoughts about that, about the rezoning of the depot land between Taylor and Harwood?
Well, I came to find out what the parameters were. The only thing I knew about it was what I read in the newspaper. What is the board's intention in terms, is it the entire strip of land that runs from the depot all the way down Taylor Street between Taylor and the railroad track, which would include Lewis Page, it would include Rogers sweeping? Is it a single one, is it a single lot, which is Devi Lot that you're looking to rezone? None of the other industrial lots on that street?
So what Joe Knox had proposed to us was to rezone the peninsula of land at the depot between Taylor and Harwood. That was zoned industrial B in the 1950s, because apparently Sand Bell unloaded concrete there. And we talked about the parameters of that, and I guess it's from King down to Whitcomb. Like, that's like the run of the land, but then it would just be the space from basically the, the road there to, from between Taylor and Harwood, that.
So there's, it's three separate lots, well, would, or you wouldn't include a little piece at the very pinnacle, because that's the MBTA's property. That's where the gate tender shan is. So it would be the parcel of land that the depot is on.
Correct.
Then it would be the parcel, a separate parcel of land next to the depot, and then it would be twenty Taylor Street, I think is his number. It used to be that it was part of the Sand Bell property. It was the old coal, it was at one time an open coal shed. You know, when I bought that building in 1976, that was the coal shed, but it was all part of the Sand Bell land and it's all been subterranean. So does it also include that parcel of land, which would be twenty Taylor Street? Or is it just aimed specifically at the property that I own? That's what I came to find out.
Sure, of course. I don't know if we have here on any sort of zoning map. What was brought up was what was zoned industrial D. So I don't know if that's.
That's the entire, that's all the way down Taylor Street.
Okay, all right.
That's Rogers sweeping, that's, that would be SWSS.
SWSS, right, yeah.
That would be the little red, the little red building that SWS used to offload.
Sure, yeah, which had been a pathetic.
Again, it wasn't clear from the little bit that was in the paper, and I came by the administrator's office to ask, and I was, you know, handed the agenda, you've been reading off of tonight, but, you know, and then you omitted it, so I didn't get a chance to answer, ask my question.
Okay, what's your question?
The question is, what are the parameters of the zoning change that you're proposing to change? If it's just my parcel, that's kind of a very, very narrow scope, and it could have a tremendous impact on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
What I do and the potential value of my property that I own.
What, yes, what Joe Knox had said at the time when we met last time to talk about this, was that this would not apply to David Erickson, because he would be grandfathered and no change would happen until, until and unless he sold the property. I recall him saying.
But would it affect the purchase price?
But it may well affect the value of my property.
Of course, yes.
I mean, I bought it as industrial B, I owned it and paid taxes on it for 40 years as industrial B, and if you're only, you know, changing the zoning of my property, I mean, the word swat zoning was brought up earlier. I mean, again, I came here with an honest, open mind tonight, because, you know, I haven't had time to research this since I read it in the paper or retain anybody to help me. I wanted to get some honest answers from the board.
Yeah.
And so that's, that's why I'm standing here before you tonight, to get some honest answers on what your intention is and why you're just zoning, if you are just zoning the two parcels that I own, are you also changing twenty Taylor Street and beyond?
Why?
Is the entire strip all the way down Taylor Street between Taylor and the railroad is industrial B?
Okay.
And changing it to commercial could, could affect things that could happen, not that, you know, it could happen on my property, it's, you know, it's a future date, my son wants to start a business there or whatever.
Yeah. Let's do this, Keith, we'll have to obviously get this clarified before we finalize this. And we gotta, Joe will be back tomorrow, I believe, and we can get his clarification of exactly what lots he means.
But I don't know if as, if as a board, the board of selectmen can say, well, we're going to rezone this land, right?
No, no, we can't, we have to go to town meeting, let's go to town meeting.
Okay, it's town meeting, it's also the zoning, but it might.
And it's, yeah.
Right.
So we got, we got to benefit from the land and we got to follow up with you and let you know what our intentions are and work with you and see what, and get your feedback on that.
And any other property owners to define that.
Of course.
It's really hard to read about it in the newspaper first.
Yeah, yeah.
Just as a property owner.
Yeah, of course.
It's very difficult after this many years to find out something this major happening that, you know, basically everything I own in the newspaper.
Yeah. Do you know Joe? Because he's better than us for a while.
He's fabulous.
Yeah.
Joe and I worked side by side chopping trees and driving brush for an entire Saturday. Joe was the, you know, was the instigator, not instigator, but worked, was the originator of the idea to clean up and helping clean up that end. And since then, I've been cleaning up other stuff when I have time and intend to keep on going.
Do you feel comfortable following up with him to find out what this, the intention was, and then we'll have the, you know, then we'll get that put into our goal as well? Or do you want to hear from us officially? Or do you want to?
I guess that would be better. Joe and I talked, you know, on the post office front steps from time to time, but I think I'd rather have something a little more official.
Okay.
This is a, you know, this is a major impact on, on me, on property value and my livelihood of 34 years.
Yeah. Can, are we just going to excise six F from the goals then? Or are we?
No, I say, I think we have to change it to say.
You say explore?
Yeah.
Are you okay with us exploring?
Yeah. Yeah, that's where we explore the rezoning and determine, Harwood, and determine impacts to all.
Explore and inform, maybe you could put inform in there?
Yeah, yeah.
And you still really want Harwood out there?
And we have, yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
It's industrial B.
Well, the whole thing, I said, we're going to find out from Joe, clarify what, exactly what lots.
Yeah, but what are you doing tonight?
Correct.
Tonight, we're just, tonight we're just going to reword this to say explore rezoning the depot land between, area defined by Joe, as business and determine all the impacts to all, all landowners.
No, I think, I think we should get it a broader brush on that.
I think maybe explore rezoning industrial B at depot area and leave it really vague like that and include landowners in said exploration or something like that.
Okay. All right. So we need to re.
We can't, we can't put anything in there about.
All right, so we need to revote.
Yeah, okay.
Six as amended.
So I move that the board of selectmen, do we have to quash our previous vote?
No.
Okay. But, that move the board of selectmen adopt six regulatory issues as a goal for fiscal year 14 with the amendment of six F.
Shouldn't it say amend the specific one?
I just said of six F.
Yeah, and you wanted to read.
Oh, and for to read explore rezoning the depot land between, the depot land now zoned industrial B between Taylor and Harwood.
Explore rezoning industrial B land in depot area.
That's right.
Yep.
And to include.
And define the reason, you know?
Yes.
Define the reason why, that purpose. Your focus is so narrow.
Sure, and the purpose.
Yeah, and that may come, you know, a five minute conversation with Joe might clarify that for you, but we'll try to get, get back to that.
But that will be part of the exploration process.
Why would we do it?
This'll, this'll get thoroughly discussed. This is just the, then, enable her to discuss it. So I'll second that.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, all right.
I'm glad it's going to be thoroughly discussed, discussed after it was omitted in the discussion. Brilliant, thank you.
Yeah. All right, thanks, David. Vision and community, 10. 10 A is explore articulating a vision for the community and conduct a townwide survey on that vision.
It's a great goal. I have nothing to add.
I don't object, all right.
It's interesting.
Okay.
So move that the board of, Alex?
Oh, I'm.
You happy?
I would certainly be happy with that one.
Vote to adopt goal number 10, vision and community for fiscal year 2014.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Not done yet? Not done yet? I have one that I didn't see in there that I had, it was to develop a program for spending the funds from the HCA. Did I miss that one?
Oh, no, no, you did miss it. It was right before master plan. Somehow, that, yeah, I have it here.
What number?
Right here. So six D?
Four C.
No, six D.
Okay.
We were talking about the HCA.
Expend new funding sources. I, I mean, I, we have to figure, that's not new funding source, we have the funding source and we have to have a way of spending it. When that money comes in, we have to, I think we have to develop a way to spend it, because I think that money, the mitigation funds, they need to offset whether it's, you know, additional equipment for highway department for plowing, if it's additional equipment for police, for, you know, additional patrol, if it's additional equipment for the fire department, there should be some way to develop, that we need to spell out how we're going to spend those mitigation funds.
Isn't that what four C does?
I don't think it does. It says, it says explore new funding sources, mitigation funds, et cetera, so that's saying, that's saying explore, that's saying explore new funding sources. It doesn't say let's.
Are you reading, are you reading that P R O J E C T as a noun or a verb? Because if you read it as a verb, it's there.
No, project mitigation funds.
No, you read it as a noun.
Yeah, right, because project mitigation funds, as is one whole noun.
Right.
Or it's an adjective, it's right?
If you change it to a verb, if you project your mitigation funds.
What you could say is.
I want something more specific.
Yeah, so develop policy on use of project mitigation funds.
From Omni, or from 15 Great Road.
From HCA's.
Only, only that, nothing else?
From.
No other.
That's no one right now.
We have two.
Current and future, Reed Meadow as well.
We have Reed Meadow and we have 15 Great Road. Those are the two host community agreements the board signed.
Okay, okay, yeah, that's fine, both of them then.
Okay, so we've got to fix that one too?
Develop policy on use of project mitigation funds.
Okay, so move that the board of selectmen adopt F, sorry, four fiscal management as amended in four C.
No, four F, adding four F.
Oh, you're adding four F?
Yeah, that's one of the questions.
Okay, all right.
So we. No, you don't need to add one. It's already in four. Okay, so are we taking it out of four C?
Project mitigation funds, and that is a noun, so that explore, well, the way I wrote four C is where exploring new funding sources include project mitigation funds. So explore new funding sources to me is to look for places to find new sources of funding. That's what I'm finding. What I'm saying is we have this funding source, we need to, we need to develop a program for how those, that, those funds are going to be dispersed amongst the town.
Okay, so if you, you'd be happy with four F being explore how the HCA funds will be distributed?[1679.62]
No, well, I don't know. I, I know, I would be happy with something that says develop a program for spending funds from the HCA, from the host community agreements.
Develop a program?
So explore new funding sources with, period.
Period.
And then, because there's no point in mentioning project mitigation funds. It's there if we're going to have a separate project mitigation funds.
No, it is, it, it does have a point in being there because, because we may want to explore project mitigation funds in some other way.
Thank you, thank you, Alex.
Yeah, I actually got a point.
But hold on, so then it can stay in four C. Explore new funding sources and explore project mitigation funds.
Yes.
So the word and missing.
No, it's explore mitigation, new funding sources such as project mitigation funds. And something else. Beels tax, whatever, you know, as in, whatever, something like that. And then four F is develop a program. And I mean, if you guys don't agree, I mean, because if, we, we have funds to mitigate the impacts of fifteen. And so those, I want to make sure that those mitigation funds go to them. So if we need a new cruiser, if we need a new fire hose, something like that, you know?
But, but I think we have to look at it beyond just what Omni is, how we deal with mitigation funds derived in this way.
Fine.
Because, you know, it's very easy for us to have a discussion about what we do with Omni funds. We don't need to go through all this to do that.
Right.
But.
So is the goal to be specific or general to project mitigation funds?
Practices for utilizing project mitigation funds. And you could even say obtained from host community agreements, if you want.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's almost like a library trustee meeting, ten thirty.
We're not done yet.
No, we've still got plenty of others.
We've still got plenty of others, yeah. Okay, so do we, we get, do a motion, a move, a second on four F?
I find move that the board of selectmen adopt a goal four F.
Yes.
To augment fiscal management for two thousand fourteen.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you very much. All right, moving on. Let's see. David, what else are you here for?
At this point, the entertainment, right?
See if government will work. I've already mentioned.
Secondary.
Yeah.
The secondary of goals. Are we going to adopt it or are we going to?
No.
I mean, they're, I mean, they're still there, I think. Secondary goals for future years, we want to reassert, want to re-vote?
I know.
All right.
If they're secondary, they're not important to this.
All right, let's see.
Going back, you had three V appointments to cultural council and historical commission.
Didn't we do that?
No, we did.
No, we only did open space committee.
Oh, okay.
A, C, three B, all right, so.
Do we have enough?
So we have for the cultural council and historical commission, we have two people who are being retired from the board because according to state statute, you're not allowed to be on there for a total of six years or two consecutive terms. So we have two people who meet that, they've been on for more than six years, so they cannot be reappointed. We have one applicant to fill one of those seats.
So move that the board of selectmen vote to appoint Margaret Lowe to a term of.
It's three years.
Three years.
Three years?
To June, June thirty.
To June, oh, I'm sorry, great.
June thirty, twenty sixteen.
June thirty, twenty sixteen, to the cultural council.
Second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All right, so for the historical commission, we have two people.
Three positions.
You got a vacant, wait a minute, two positions and two people? Two people?
You've got a vacant.
There are three, there are, and there's a continuing.
Yeah, I didn't see that poll, okay. All right, 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 I thought that was, okay, so two continuing for, okay, right.
So move that the board of selectmen vote to appoint Donna White and John Ledger to a term of three years and the historical commission expires June thirty, two thousand sixteen.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All right. Sealer awaits measures.
This is a re-upping of our contract with Northern Middlesex Council of Governments.
Right, move that the board of selectmen vote to authorize execution of an amendment to the contract with Northern Middlesex Council of Governments, N M C O G, for sealer of weights and measures services for the town of Littleton in an amount not to exceed four thousand dollars for fiscal year two thousand fourteen.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All right, so now we have the solar pilot agreement from NexSun. And this is a, a formalization of the vote of, that was taken at town meeting.
All right, town meeting authorized the board to enter into this agreement, and so here it is. It's been signed by NexSun and we're all set to go. It's not, it's not the one that, because this one has a June date.
Check the date.
Yes, it's June. I do it to this date of June.
Then you'll handwrite July.
July, okay.
When you sign it.
Okay.
Move that the board of selectmen vote pursuant to article eighteen of the May sixth, two thousand thirteen annual town meeting to enter into an executive on, and execute on behalf of the town a tax agreement as authorized by MGL chapter fifty-nine, section thirty-eight H, with NexSun Energy LLC with respect to annual payments in lieu of real and personal property taxes for a term of twenty years relative to a solar energy system with an AC rated capacity of up to four megawatts to be installed on a parcel of land owned by PR Littleton Expansion LLC and located at one hyphen three Distribution Center Circle in Littleton.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All right, that'll come around. And so now we have collective bargaining for police dispatcher union contract consolidation. So Keith, correct me if I'm wrong, but this appears to be similar to what we did last week where we have a bunch of MO, memorandums of understanding and agreements that we are codifying into one contract which will expire on June thirty, two thousand fifteen.
That's right. Last time we did the police and fire contracts, there's no substantive changes to what the board has already agreed to. And we just put them all into one document that's codified.
Move that the board of selectmen vote to execute a consolidated collective bargaining agreement CDU with the Massachusetts Coalition of Police Local two zero four A, which contains all the provisions of the two thousand six to two thousand nine CBAs modified by the two thousand nine, two thousand ten memorandum of agreement, MOA, and the two thousand ten, two thousand twelve MOA, and the November fifth, two thousand twelve MOA.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. All right, let's see. Fiscal and two thousand thirteen year-end transfers. So Bonnie has prepared a summary of transfers from one department to another department to, I would just make everything, get everything paid for nice and neat. From my understanding, the employee benefits is going to be the, the bucket that gets, is deducted. And the increases are going to legal expenses, gasoline, wastewater expense, and general insurance. And the reason that the employee benefits are, are able to be reduced is it's not a reduction in benefits, it is because the money that we budgeted conservatively did come in under as we hoped, and we can now use that to transfer into other funds.
Specifically, this is coming from the unemployment expense account.
Okay.
We had planned for a large increase in these, we needed it, and we did not. So we're using to, we're looking to use this, this amount to offset.
And this closes books on two thousand thirteen?
Yeah.
Okay.
Move that the board of selectmen vote pursuant to MGL chapter forty-four, section thirty-three B to approve year-end transfers between various line items of the fiscal year two thousand thirteen budget totaling eighty-seven thousand two hundred dollars subject to the further approval of the finance committee.
Before a second, I just wanted to ask for a little better handle on why we're so far over on legal expenses.
Um, I had provided a summary on the back of your item.
I don't, I don't need it now, but I want a break.
Right here.
Yeah. We get the reports from time to time, but.
Yeah, well.
And what are the trends that are driving it? And is this something we're going to expect as we continue along? Or is this a high point that's temporary?
Well, it, we, I think we could point to the sixty-five thousand dollars that we spent on fifteen Gray Road just in this, in this fiscal year, that those legal services will not be expended again for that purpose. That there was, we had about twenty-seven thousand dollars in costs for bargaining in the collective bargaining agreements this year. We're not going to be doing that next year, although we will the year after that. So some of these are cyclical and, let's see, some of the other.
There was about eleven thousand in ATV case expense that was well high in the overall numbers. It's a very nominal amount. But as Keith said, he pointed out the two, the big drivers.
Mm-hmm. No, those are, those are more than the seventy-four thousand. Right, no, it was seventy-four thousand, right?
Yes, it is.
Now, what about bills of prior years? Are they going to get their bills in for June yet?
Oh, we'd, we could.
Yeah. All right, so we got a motion.
One second.
All right, thank you. Motion remains second, all those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Special municipal employees. This is a recommendation of Labor Town, Labor Council so that we can be in compliance with conflict of interest laws. This is something that is done because we have some employees who are also on town boards, they're residents, and they're on committees or commissions.
You're right, it's been, it's been on fixed for cases of dual office holding. Recently, we had a member of the police department, a full-time employee, who was elected to a town board. And when we've had that happen in the past, we've gone back and had that board designated as a special municipal employee. It's not just that member, it's all the board members. So for example, the Board of Assessors is all special municipal employees, the Board of Health is, and we have full-time town employees who are also working, who are also volunteer board members. So this, this solves that problem. The other issue was for the public safety positions, where you have reserve police officers who are, you know, you're, you're allowed to be, you know, a reserve officer and working in another position.
Or call fire or.
Okay. So Keith, is this a permanent designation?
It is.
Okay.
Unless we vote.
Yeah, unless you vote or, yeah, okay.
I have some reservations about this, and I don't know if we want to undertake a discussion about this tonight. But I always have had reservations about this because it does solve one problem in, and there's an inherent conflict of interest in some of these cases. But, and, and the ethics law are prohibited. As soon as you, as a person is paid for one position, then any other position becomes a conflict. And so obviously, the solution to that is making special municipal employees. But is that really the, the solution we want? Because now this makes one person able to hold multiple positions. And in effect, getting around, coming up against a conflict of interest. It's a problem because we, in a small town like this, people have to serve in, in multiple positions. But it can also be a problem, and you can consolidate around a few people serving in multiple positions. And what better way to get your way than to put all your friends into jobs and, in committees and, and proceed? So that's why I'm conflicted with this. And I've made very careful use of it in the past, and we just keep making more and more. And I actually spoke to Tom Harrington about this today. But I would like to see a more comprehensive look at cause and effect. You know, well, if you do this, you solve the problem. This clearly solves the problem is that these people will not be able to continue if we do not adopt special municipal employee status. But there's another side to it that I want to have a closer look at. We certainly haven't got time to dig through it tonight.
No.
Can you table this?
So, no, I'm, well, my question for Alex is, are you so conflicted that you don't want to vote for this? Or are you so conflicted that you vote for a reservation and you want to go try to fix it in another manner, some way down the road?
I asked Tom Harrington a question today. I said, if we chose not to act on this tonight, well, those people immediately have to be removed. And common sense is no. That it's been this way for a while. It's been the standard practice in a lot of towns for a long while. The last time we had a real serious discussion about this was years ago about the use of special municipal employee status. I'm just not comfortable just taking these broad brush strokes and going through this without looking at, you know, what would be, again, back to that, to set of words, unintended consequences.
I hear your reservations, and I think it's worthwhile to look into them. I don't feel that it's necessary to go against Labor Council's recommendation at this point where, so that I think we can do both, where we can resolve this issue right now and we can find a way to, to look into resolving this another way that satisfies, you know, your concerns.
And so I understand the way this came up is it was determined by staff that, that the conflict was there and, and what the solution to that was. And the solution, of course, is, is the people that remain, make them special municipal employees. But the positions get, so it doesn't matter who comes in now or in the future, if the position is there. And when you're talking about on-call dispatches with reserve police officers, first off, I'm not sure. I think they're not covered. I think they are covered. I think we don't have to do that for them. I can't say that I'm a hundred percent right, which is why I want to have that discussion with council. And so that leaves members of the park and rec commission. And it also makes for a growing list, which the list is on here, of how many that we've done that for. And if you go through this list and you look at places where people could serve in multiple roles and, and achieve undue influence in those roles, I think it's something we should pay close attention to, to make sure that we don't get in that position. So I guess what I'm saying is, let's not vote on this tonight. Let's get more information on the pluses and minuses of it. And one of the things that was mentioned today in the discussion, it would be really interesting to hear Ethics Commission actually present information on this. Not somebody's opinion of what Ethics Commission's opinion is, but somebody from Ethics Commission to come out and say, this is why you have to do it. This is what happens if you, if you, there's a consequence of doing it. And I believe they actually will do that.
Well, but the way it's framed, because we know these are addressing real cases, that if you're saying refer to the Ethics Commission, then you're referring it for enforcement.
No, I'm referring, I'm saying we're talking these cases.
Maybe it's not an intent to do it, but that if you're saying that, that we have cases that we know constitute violations of the conflict of interest law, it, it just, it just does. I mean, no one asked, our, for our permission, no, no, no town employee, paid town employee has come forward to ask our permission to run for office. And we, and so we, we have just been dealing with the aftermath of that act. The voters, and, and the discussion we had when, when you approved the Board of Health as a special municipal employee, because town employee, paid town employee Bill Cole got himself elected by the voters to the Board of Health. And so the fix, the solution was mindful of the act that the voters had taken. The board of selectmen found that they could vote to declare that board a special municipal employee to allow the voters' choice to continue to serve.
Was that also, was Bill also on the permanent municipal building committee?
Yes.
And the MBTA commuter rail advisory committee? And the study for increasing voter participation? Is that, those were all voted on twenty-third?
No, someone else was a study committee. There were three committees for Bill alone.
He's on the voter participation.
And, and on some of those, and, and on the case of two of those three, the board of selectmen appointed Bill to the committee knowing that he was a paid town employee. So we were just, so it was not, so the fix was to, was a technical one, to come into compliance with what the letter of the law says. It wasn't any, you know, I don't think it was any. The discussion didn't, certainly didn't go further than that, so.
What I'm saying is understanding, I'm not saying turn these cases over to Ethics Commission. I'm saying have this board understand the pros and cons of special municipal employee status every time we grant it. And, and having the Ethics Commission, who is the one that forced this on us in the first place, is much more strictly looked at, I guess would be the word to put it, than it has been in the past. And so, so if they have people that come out and talk about this.
Okay.
Let's have them come out and talk about it.
So you're not ready to vote on this tonight? I am, because I feel that we need, because I'm ready to hang my hat on Labor Council's recommendation. But, and I feel that we need to do whatever we can to make sure that people can serve. So I'm going to, and I'm going to put this on the agenda for July twenty-second as, so that the, so we can vote on this. And then we can, Alex, come up with any type of proposal that you can so, so that we can get, we can fully understand this, and we'll get that on the agenda.
When, when you're saying council, Labor Council, are you talking about Attorney Harrington?
No.
No, I, I misspoke. This did, this came from, the list came from Tom Harrington, came from town council.
Oh, so it's.
So that was my, yeah, I said, we're council, but I was thinking of something.
Because in my, in my reading of Attorney Harrington's letter, I don't see a recommendation. I see him conveying information on which we're supposed to make a policy decision.
And he actually said to me today.
And you do get to decide. I mean, we had it very clear, and then, again, in the matter of Bill Cole. The board of selectmen got to decide whether, whether Bill Cole had the ability to continue to serve in both positions as the, as an elected Board of Health and as the paid maintenance supervisor for this building. And based on your vote, he would govern himself accordingly. So if you said no, then he would decide whether he wanted to be on the Board of Health or a town employee because he couldn't do both. And, and, and Michael Corey will have the same decision to be made regarding his continued employment with the police department or service on the park. So then, based on what you vote.
So if we don't vote on this tonight, is it effective in meaning that he has to make that decision? I mean, to me, that's a reading, to me, that's a reading of the town, of the law.
Well, this has been ongoing.
Wait a minute, wait, no, wait a minute.
Well, it's been going on since May. I mean, it's.
Yeah.
We discovered it.
We discovered it in the last month. As I say, no one asked our permission.
So ethically, ethically, he needs to make the decision if we don't, because, because now it's an issue.
It's an, it's an issue until you resolve it.
Yeah, but yeah, we just discovered it as an issue, so it's, now that we've discovered it, it needs to be resolved, or one way or the other.
But this is different than a disclosure that the board determines it's okay to continue. This is not that. This is designation of a group of employees.
Yeah.
No matter who the person is. No matter who the person is, as special municipal employee. That's different. That's different. To take a case-by-case basis and have somebody file a disclosure and having the appointing authority make a determination is totally...
So we'll have a thoughtful discussion earlier in the evening on the twenty-second.
On the twenty-second, thank you.
That's mine.
And then Alex will come up with something at some point of...
I want to hear what, what the ethics commission thinks.
Yeah.
They're, they're the ones that brought this on us. Let's ask them what they think.
Okay.
Because we're asking people who are interpreting what they think. Let's have the people that actually say, this is what will...
And you'll, and you'll get that, you'll make that happen, you'll get...
I'll, I'll call them and ask them, or I'll get...
And get some sort of presentation or some sort of summary on it. Okay. Land, grant, application, church metal property. So again, this is a town meeting authorized and we're going to authorize submitting, no, we were authorized to submit the, the application. That's what we're doing at this point.
So you're taking a vote to do so and we qualified for fifty-eight percent funding under this land grant program. The purchase price of the property, as you recall, is four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. And two hundred and forty thousand seven hundred is what we would qualify for, so that's what we're applying for. We were successful in getting a grant under this program for the purchase of the YAP property a few years ago and we're hopeful that we will get another grant in this market.
Okay, move that the board of selectmen vote pursuant to article fifteen of the May sixth, two thousand and thirteen annual town meeting to authorize the submission of a grant application to the Division of Conservation Services under its Land Acquisitions for Natural Diversity, L-A-N-D, program towards the acquisition of the so-called Church Meadows property comprised of seven point one six acres, more or less, and one, ninety-four Great Road for agricultural use.
Second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Consent has ended, all right. Anything else Keith, Bonnie?
Thank you.
All right. Minutes of June twenty-fourth. The first bullet item, it says Chairman Doucette, right on the left, from Brian Tarbox received via email. I'd like to say a little more detail and I can just hand these to you, Jen. Just stating that he felt Mr. Doucette's behavior was unacceptable and bullying. And then I have, and then it says here, Mr. Doucette stated that he disagreed with the depiction. I just thought it was the lit land the way it was, it just doesn't say anything, so.
I mean, I don't know if it was supposed to, I remind you, one more picnic at noon, followed by a concert. The concert would only be at the church if it rained. I think you can just cross out at the first church unitarium. You know, that was, that was the rain.
Other than that?
Thank you.
All right, good.
So do we make a motion to adjourn?
Yeah, make a motion to approve the minutes first.
Oh, I make a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
Of June twenty-fourth?
Of June twenty-fourth, two thousand and thirteen.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And with nothing else?
We've got to go on our executive session.
No.
No.
My, this guy, this guy put off, that's right. All right, move to adjourn?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Woo, well done. All right, so...
I am well done.
Jen, are you going to then read this, I'll say this again.